The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the fourth day of public hearing thirty-one of the Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability. As those who have been following the Royal Commission will know, we are considering a vision for an inclusive society. I shall ask Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of the country.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge Aiden Brisbane. We recognise the country, north and south of the Brisbane River, as the home of both the Turrbal and Jaggera nations. We acknowledge the Turrbal and Jaggera nations as their traditional owners and custodians of the lands upon which this Royal Commission is sitting. We acknowledge and pay our deep respect to elders past and present, and we acknowledge First Nations young people who one day will take their place as elders. We extend that respect to all First Nations people and acknowledge their enduring connection to land, sky, seas and waterways. We pay our deep respect to First Nations people here today and who are following this public hearing online on the mainland and on islands, including Tasmania and the Torres Strait, especially elders, parents and young people with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I note just before calling upon Ms Eastman that Ms McMillan, casey representing Queensland, is in the hearing room.
Good morning.
Thank you. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Good morning, Commissioners and good morning to everybody in the room and those following the proceedings online. So I'm very pleased to welcome our first witness this morning, Dr Manisha Amin. And you'll see that she's with us here in the hearing room. And I understand you've made your author affirmation before coming.
Yes, I have.
Dr Amin, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission today in our Brisbane hearing room. And I assume travelling from Sydney for that purpose. Thank you very much too for the written statement that you have provided. We each have a copy of that statement and we've each read it. So thank you very much for that as well. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
Right. Now, I know that you'd like to be referred to as Manisha this morning rather than the more formal title. Is that right?
Absolutely.
But I can confirm that you are Dr Manisha Amin.
Yes, I am.
And you are the Chief Executive Officer of the Centre for Inclusive Design.
Yes, that's right.
And you've made a statement dated the twenty-second of November this year.
Yep.
You've got a copy with you?
I do indeed.
And am I right in understanding there's no changes that you want to make to the statement?
No.
And the statement's true?
Yes.
Now, I'm going to ask you some questions about the statement and some of your work. But I want to start with your professional background. It may be of interest to the Commissioners to know how somebody comes to be the CEO of the Centre for Inclusive Design. You've provided your full CV to the Commissioners in the material. But the Centre for Inclusive Design was formally named Media Access Australia. And the centre is a not-for-profit registered charity working with clients to create products and services in using inclusive design principles. And you've been in this role since September twenty sixteen. Now, prior to taking on this role, you've worked for other not-for-profit organisations over time. And you have a Doctor of Philosophy in Arts and Social Sciences, a Masters in Professional Writing and a Bachelor of Business Marketing. So how does someone with this background become the CEO of the Centre for Inclusive Design?
Can I just say that would probably be the most difficult question I have to answer. I think that I've always been quite interested in social justice. And I would like to also acknowledge the First Nations people on whose land I have the privilege to live on and thrive, actually, on land that is unceded and.
Can I just might ask you to slow down and just also just check with our technical team whether we've got any echo or reverberation coming through. All good? Okay, sorry about that. I can just hear a bit of an echo coming through.
Not a problem. And the reason I say that is because I've always been quite interested in what it means to be the other. You know, as somebody who comes to this country from another place, as someone who identifies as neurodiverse, as someone who has a child who is has a lived experience of disability, the notion of other has always been quite interesting to me. What I would like to focus on though is also the change from Media Access Australia to the Centre for Inclusive Design. And to do that, we went through an inclusive design process without knowing that that's what we were doing. We really asked people in Australia, we took ourselves out of the picture and said to people with disability as well as to businesses and government, why don't we have a more accessible Australia? What's stopping us? Because the technology exists, the tools exist. We're not talking about something that's overly complicated from a practical kind of tools perspective. However, we weren't seeing the change that you would expect when everything's there to make something happen. And we realised the problem was actually that the conversation was the wrong conversation. The conversation was, it's good to have, it's nice to have, this is important to some people.
That sounds a bit aspirational.
Well, not only aspirational, but it doesn't fit into why people are rewarded in this world. So we're rewarded when we make products that sell. We're rewarded when we do what's on our P Ds. You know, we're rewarded when we do well at school. None of those things were connected to this conversation. And inclusive design was a way to actually link the reward systems that exist in Australia today with the needs of the people who are actually missing out because the reward systems actually exclude them.
Okay. So tracing the history of the Centre for Inclusive Design, I've already mentioned that the predecessor name was Media Access Australia. But that organisation formed out of the Australian Caption Centre. And this was an initiative that was undertaken in the very early nineteen eighties because captions were not available on Australian TV at the time. So the Australian Caption Centre was formed and it created, was created to lobby for captioning for deaf and hearing impaired Australians. And out of that lobbying work developed commercial captioning services for television, video, DVDs across Australia. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So then there's a process of the commercial operations going in one direction. And this all, that's in the statement Commissioners, but it all evolves and leads to the Centre for Inclusive Design. So you do have, as I've mentioned earlier, that status as an Australian charity. And you work out on a not-for-profit basis, but you've got some commercial aspects to the work you do and we'll get to that shortly. I want to ask you about this organisation and the extent to which people with disability, lived experience of disability or direct experience of disability are part of the leadership and the government's arrangements in the organisation. So what can you tell us about the board of the Centre for Inclusive Design?
We're very lucky. The board of the Centre for Inclusive Design, a lot of the board members have been with us since the days of the Australian Captioning Centre. So unlike many boards, we have longevity. In terms of the board's board, we have, because we have that longevity, you know, when we think about disability, we have people who are now have aged out of the, you know, NDIS version of disability into ageing. But we have one member of our board who identifies as a person with disability. We have four other members of the board who identify as having age-related disability conditions or medical health conditions as well.
That's every director has either lived experience or direct experience. And the centre also has a number of employees. I think you currently have a headcount of sixteen people. And in terms of the people who are employed by the centre, what can you tell us about the employees? Their experience of disability, but also just generally the the skills and the experience of people who work with you.
We have, I think, I'm very fortunate. I have one of the best teams I could ever ask for for the work we do, but also as a general organisation. They have various lived experiences. The youngest person in the team is twenty-one years old, the oldest is sixty years old. The sixty-year-old reports to the twenty-one-year-old. We have people with physical disability, people with neurodevelopmental disorders, people with mental health issues. And when I use those words, those things are actually not, they're so important in terms of the insight and the quality and the calibre of the work that people bring. They also force us to look at the systems that are in place in our organisation every day. And sometimes that's tough, but I think I would be one of the only organisations that when COVID hit, we didn't have to change one thing in the way we worked.
Why was that?
Because our systems were already made for people who lived at home as well as people who worked in an office. And so when we actually moved into lockdown, we thought we'd have to change things. But actually, because we had systems for people who lived in different states, who needed captions to understand what was being said, who needed audio description, everything was already in place for all of us. So we all benefited when COVID happened from the systems that we'd had to have designed that were not necessarily part of the standard.
Right. Now, the purpose of the centre is to promote, facilitate and advance universal access and usability. And its aim is to reduce isolation, discrimination and inequality people facing vulnerability may experience. And a further purpose is to increase the participation and the inclusion of people who experience vulnerability in economic, social, civil, political and cultural life. So that's quite an ambitious aim, is it not?
Well, if you're not ambitious, you know, what's the use of existing?
Okay. So how you achieve these purposes is through creating policy, products, services in collaboration with people most affected by policies, products and services. Is that right?
That's right.
So that's sort of really the core or the essence is about thinking right at that point of origin. What in developing or creating policies, products or services do you ensure start with the person with the vulnerability or people with disability? If I use people with disability for a moment, right in the centre. That's the starting point. So it's not coming after, it's the starting point. Is that right?
Yes, that's absolutely right. I think that what we want to do is really focus on the how. Because there are a lot of organisations who focus on the why or the why should we or what needs to be done. But actually, what we found was that the biggest gap was people just don't know how to be inclusive. And so that's what we do.
So in your business, you use this expression called edge user. And we were quite intrigued. What does an edge user mean? And why do you use that expression to describe some people?
I think it's because when we think about the creation of policies, products, experiences, whatever it is, there are the people who create the world that we're in and then the people who use that, those products. And when we focus on words like disability, number one, you know, there's the ableist construct around these words. But also people tend to focus on the person, not the challenge that they've created. But when we talk about edge clients, edge customers or edge users, the edge is actually about the mismatch between what they're designing and that person's ability to use it.
Can you give me a practical example of that?
Absolutely. So when we think about, the example I've used actually in the statement is around, say, transport. And so an edge user for a transport system, maybe this example actually came in our office. We were looking at some accessibility around a new app that had been designed for people with vision impairment. And if you looked at the app from a, just a disability perspective, they had made some changes. So you could say that edge user in the first instance might have been someone who couldn't see. And so they'd fixed that. But actually, the edge user was the person in that, sorry, I'm a bit confused. So in that instance though, if the person didn't use transport, they weren't an edge user of that product. So for instance, that product was accessible from a WICAG perspective. But when we showed it to somebody who actually used buses every day, he said, Manisha, this is a great, you know, sure, I can access this product, but I would never use it because it doesn't tell me which order the buses are in. So I'd still have to ask the person next to me whether my bus was here or not and in fact which number, which one it was in the queue. Because my buses, the buses all come in a big row. And so I guess an edge user is actually the person first who would use that product. And then what are the functional issues that we've forgotten about that need to be considered for that person to be able to use that product? Does that explain that?
It doesn't. So to be able to do the work you do, you need to have access to an engagement with edge users. And how do you do that?
It's actually not as hard as people think. I think the first question we ask people is who have you considered when you're looking at your services? Who haven't you considered? And then we take a functional look at it. So we go, well, what if people can't see, hear, think? You know, so looking at, I guess, the five senses. And then also thinking about other ways that people can't access. So it could be because of region, it could be because of gender. So looking at the intersectionality piece as well. And then looking at how we find those people because they exist just like everybody else exists, right?
So with the edge users, there might be some people who might be quite unique as an edge user. So the example that you gave, that might be quite unique because of the person's circumstances and the nature of the transport that's available. Are there edge users where you're seeing the collective edge user or the sort of systemic impact on a group of people who could then be identified as edge users?
Yes and no. And this is where it does get a little bit theoretical. If we think about, one of the biggest biases we have in the world at the moment is this idea of the average. So if we look at Todd Rose's work on the end of average, what they're kind of arguing is that there's no such thing as an average person. And the minute that we start to join people together, what we're doing is looking for the generalisations that actually exclude other people. The problem with people, or the challenge that sometimes people have with people with disability. And when we throw user groups or populations across a scattergram, what you find is.
What do you mean by scattergram? Work with me, give me some.
Sorry. So like a bell curve, right? So if you think about a bell curve and you look at the bell curve from the top, often when we design, we design for the middle of that bell curve. We're not designing for the edge of the bell curve. If you look at the people on the edge of the bell curve, not only are they different from the middle, they're often different from each other. So you'll find, and I know that through the Commission as well, you'll find some people who say, I like X. You know, I might be someone who is an Auslan, I use Auslan as my first language. But, or I might be someone who identifies as deaf but actually prefers captioning, or I might prefer something else. And often people in the mainstream will say, but I just want to know the one thing because they're trying to generalise. When you look at the edge as something that's super different, if we design for the edge, we're actually designing for the middle as well as for the differences on the sides. It sounds like a complicated concept, but actually it means we need less people, not more people. And we need to think really carefully and deeply about what they're saying to us on the edge. When we've done this work in mainstream organisations in terms of research, we find that we spend maybe ten to twenty percent of the revenue that an organisation would normally spend on market research. We get the same issues that the mainstream gets plus more. And what we also get is a heat map where in the middle.
What's a heat map?
Yep. So where in the middle something might be just difficult for people, on the edge, it might actually be unusable or life or death. So the heat map is actually where the priority is of what you should change first. Does that? Sorry.
I want to get, I want to move into how this happens in practice and then connect that to the concepts of inclusive design and universal design. But before we get there, coming back to the centre and the work that you do. And this might help the Commissioners sort of think about what you've just described in the way you deliver your services. So you've said in the statement and Commissioners, this is paragraph twenty, that there's five areas in which you provide services. One is innovation and that's conducting the design, inclusive design workshops and innovation labs. And that's really looking at new ways of doing things. So very innovative approach. But what you've just described is part of that process of innovation. But you have to really understand what it is that you're trying to address before you can start innovation.
Well, I think it's both. So it does hundred percent cover innovation. It also covers the edge user research that we just spoke about.
The second.
The second one as well. I think in the innovation space, the critical issue is how we design and who's in the room and being very clear about what we're doing. I think in Australia, we bandy the term co-design around a lot, but we actually very rarely co-design.
What do you mean by co-design when you use that expression?
So when I use that expression, what I mean is that the people that we're designing with have equal rights and power and choices about the end product. So often we'll design with people, but the person who has the fundamental, the final decision on what's designed or comes up with a solution is often outside the room. So it might be participatory design, but the power dynamic is still not with the people who are most affected.
Okay. So we've dealt with innovation. The other is edge user research, which we've touched on.
Yes.
One is leadership and change. And it's just part of looking at an organisation. You're looking at the behaviour of organisation, how culture works in organisation and picking up issues around governance, risk and leadership. What approach do you bring to looking at the culture of an organisation through that perspective of governance, risk and leadership? How do you do that work?
There are two things we need to do. One at a leadership level is really, I think this is a really, it came through in yesterday's conversations with the Commission as well, is that we need to actually have people understand that the reason that they are leaders, the reason I am a leader is because I have the skills that work to the bias of the community and society we're in today. It's not because I'm better or that I deserve this. I just work with the system and I'm good at that. When leaders understand that and actually realise the reason other people are not leaders is because the system's flawed, then it's incumbent on them to fix that system.
That's a big thing, isn't it, to say to leaders, actually, you're not there because you're necessarily the best at what you do across everything. But it happens to be a match of where the culture bias or the regulatory bias connects you at that moment.
Hundred percent. How many times do we say to children at school, you know, Bob is great at history, but he doesn't speak up enough in class. Now, when did speaking up have to do with learning that history doesn't? It's actually because of the bias and privilege that we have around people who speak and articulate themselves in a particular way are more likely to raise up the ranks.
So how do you unravel that in terms of looking at culture in organisations?
It's really hard. I was speaking to somebody at Microsoft about what they've done from an inclusive design perspective and how they were able to make the change. And certainly they had a leader who has lived experience around family and disability. They have a vision which is about everyone, so it's incumbent on them to do the right thing. But the other two things they changed, one was that they changed their reward system so that inclusion became part of the reward system in terms of people's work practice. And then they had every staff member go through bias training as mandatory. And so when people understand bias and privilege, then the conversation around disability stops becoming person-centric.
That requires people to undergo training that forces self-reflection. It's a very internalised approach rather than training that connects you to the other people in the organisation. Where you can all say, oh, we've got a shared experience now. We've done the training. It's a different type of training, isn't it, if you're going internally to ask people to really question their own bias and reflect on their own privilege and power and how they use that?
So the way we do this, and part of the reason we do this, going back to that idea of systemic change, is that often when people do training, how many of us have done training where you go off, you do this training, it's really exciting? Come up with lots of, you know, great things we're going to do back at work and then none of it happens. You're there. By the third week, we've forgotten that training and we're back in normal system. So what we do in our work is rather than have separate training, we bring it through in this cultural process change piece. So we start by actually explaining what inclusion is and isn't. We really moderate around shame. We ask people to bring into the room the people who are struggling the most with whatever it is that we're looking at.
That's people to be fairly vulnerable in an organisational context.
Hundred percent. So these groups are not big. So we move for tip, you know, so we normally look at about twenty or thirty people. And we normally externalise some of the problems. So instead of saying we're bringing you in to look at, you know, if the issue is, say, disability recruitment, what we actually do is we say this is actually about having the best staff you can possibly have in this organisation. What's stopping you from doing that? And then by the second day, we're co-designing together and we bring in the people who are missing out on the system. The reason that we move away from that shame and the vulnerability is we're not asking people about why they personally have done the wrong thing. We're asking them what it is in their system that stops them from doing what we think is the right thing. And how can we nudge the system by about five percent to actually make it better?
And how do you ensure that the training work you do, and that's one on this, actually gets those outcomes? Because I think one of the questions might be, well, people got a lot of training or they do the online training and it's a pretty good day and as you say, nothing really happens. So how do you make sure that the training is effective? It can be evaluated and it's sustainable in achieving change?
So in terms of this sort of work, what we do, there's two answers to that. First of all, by instead of calling it training, we actually say, we're actually working on your reward system. So tell us what you've got a problem with in your, what you want to make in the, so say you're a company that makes, I don't know, coffee machines. How do you make a better coffee machine for more customers to access? That's what we're looking at. We're not saying to them, how do you make your coffee machine work for people with disability? Because actually, the person with disability will have unique insights that can help make a better coffee machine for everyone. So we've flipped the conversation around firstly. Secondly, when the actual co-design or the participatory design happens and we have a list of ideas, we then measure how many of those ideas happen and how they happen. What we don't measure is how many people, say, with disability are able to use that coffee machine. Because the minute we go into that space, we're back into the old medicalised model again.
That's fixing people with disability to use a product that requires an adaption by them rather than the product adapting.
Exactly. And we're so, you know, when we think about the fourth industrial revolution and innovation and technology, before COVID, if I asked people about what they liked or were scared of, most people were scared about their privacy being removed, their choice, their control as technology becomes more and more ubiquitous. People with disability have two key superpowers. One is there are people who have such a strong understanding of technology because of the way they have used technology to make the world better for them and the hacks that they have. And the other group have actually experienced the things we don't want anyone to have experienced. So what better groups of people to actually design the world for the future?
Now, one other area of your work is accessibility auditing. And I wanted to ask you, what does that actually mean? How do you go into an organisation or look at a product or the way in which services are delivered and audit? What are you auditing against?
So there's two types of accessibility auditing we do. The first one is, you know, you talked about our workers, Media Access Australia. When the internet first came out, it actually removed disability for a lot of people. And then as we became more complicated, it actually brought back disability. And so what we do when we audit is look at the worldwide. And so what we do when we audit is look at the um worldwide web consortium standards. Um which is um the W C A G guidelines. And we actually, they have a series of um. Dimensions or or rules around what would make a site accessible for people. With disability, particularly people with mobility issues, screen readers, et cetera. And so we will check a website, make sure that it works. If it doesn't work, we give recommendations. To the organisation about how to make that work and then we go back and check it again. Um one of the things that happens is. You know, something can be accessible one day and then three weeks later, somebody else. Does something to that site and it's not accessible, so it's important to go through that circle um over and over. The other part of our accessibility auditing that we're doing more and more these days is actually looking at processes. Um and behaviours as well. You know, so we've noticed, for instance, you can have a room with a hearing loop in it. But no one knows how to use the hearing loop or where the instructions are. So it would meet the audit, the building audit, but actually it's. It's useless. So we're um looking at that side now as well more.
So now I want to turn to uh getting some concrete understanding. Of the difference between universal design and inclusive design. And do you think it's i- important that we understand the difference between these concepts? And then bringing them together, how they work in practice?
Yes, I really think it's critical at this point that we do, and I'm looking at this from a design perspective, um rather than from an. Um I guess an e- equity perspective, though the two are quite related. I think um universal design came out of a time before technology, when we had a physical world. So you think about a ramp, the idea is if somebody used a ramp, it worked for um for everyone. Um inclusive design has come out of um the next step, which is around hyper personalisation. So when we talked earlier about.
Slow that down and say that again. So universal design is design that everybody could use.
Yes.
I think, um so if.
Yeah.
A a building had stairs, somebody put in a ramp, then everybody could use the ramp.
That's right.
But it also uh provides a greater degree of access for. I'm thinking about an example very close to home where I am in the Philip Street. Is we had law chambers that had steps. We put in a ramp for wheelchair access. But it actually became extremely helpful to move large trolleys full of lots of books.
Absolutely.
Whereas wheeling bags became more and more popular. So actually is used more by people. For other purposes rather than for wheelchairs. So that that would that be an example of universal design?
That's exactly right. And it fits in very closely with that social model of disability where we're looking at um. Medical disability but also temporary and situational disability. So anyone who's in that basket can use that that service.
So basically, universal design, you're looking for a design. That it will be accessible and usable by as many people as possible.
Exactly right.
But universal does not guarantee universal accessibility. Is that right?
Because we're all really different. So in what inclusive design does is say. That actually what we're looking for these days is personalisation and hyper personalisation.
I think that's why I pause. What do you mean by hyper personalisation?
So back in the day when we had a phone, we all had a phone on our desks and then you need. If you can't use that phone, you needed a special adjustment, right, to that to that device to be able to use it. If we look at our smartphone, most of us in this room, I'm guessing might have a smartphone. But no two people in this room, I guarantee you, will use that phone exactly the same way. We all use it completely differently. And the reason we're able to use it completely differently is it has been designed inclusively. So if it wasn't for, you know, the first technology around gesture control came from people with carpal tunnel. If it wasn't for things like voiceover, um we may not have had a Siri. When we think about things like pinch technology on that phone, um the use of um voice. To direct rather than having to type, all of these things come from people who are on the edge. So some of the people on the edge might be using that technology every day, all day. Others of us use it sometimes, not always, and we use a little bit of it. So it's hyper personalised to me. As opposed to everybody else in this room.
There's three dimensions, isn't there, uh to the approach that your centre uses on inclusive design? And these are derived by some research done in Canada, is that right?
That's right.
The first one is to recognise diversity and uniqueness. The second is using inclusive processes and tools. And the third is broad beneficial impact. So can I ask you about each one of these elements? That first element, is that what you've just been talking about, about recognising diversity? But that step further uniqueness?
That's right. So you're designing for one, not designing for many. But the ones that we design for are the people that are, you know, have the most. Uh the the richest experiences of exclusion, the richest experiences of um functional need. That's what you design for. And then that way, everybody else benefits. The other thing in that, sorry, the other thing in recognising diversity and uniqueness is we also have to recognise the diversity. Of the group who's doing the design work. Um and recognise the challenges of that group or the blind spots or biases of that group. So it comes in both sides. Who are we designing for and then who's doing the design?
Uh using inclusive processes and tools, this you say is trying to live. The values of nothing about us without us. And so this is a very proactive approach. In bringing edge users in to the process, is that right?
That's right. And I think there's a lot of conversation, a lot of the talk is actually about this middle part, the inclusive processes and tools. But I would argue that if you if we don't recognise our own diversity or our own blind spots beforehand. Then actually, when we walk into the room to use inclusive processes and tools. We're actually setting up a flawed system. Our foundations are shaky.
Does this challenge the idea that, well, this is the way we've always done things? And this is the way that suited our organisation in the past? Do you have to really confront? That um that bias of the status quo. And that pull to always maybe go back to what's safe or what we've done all the time. Is that part of the challenge of doing this?
Yes, it is. I think the reason is that. Systems hate diversity. You know, um our systems are basically, if something is different, we notice it really, really quickly and we move to make it the same again. Um our large complex organisations, the way we write policies, it's all in a particular way, it's really hard to change that. So that's why we go back. If we don't go back, then what we do is go, oh, we'll just use the processes we already have. And we'll just um we'll just add some different people in. But the problem with doing that is unless we know how we're doing it, why we're doing it. Chances are we're just being more exclusionary or paying paying lip service to particular um groups or particular advice. Because you're looking for the advice of um uniqueness, not the advice of many. And the bias in the many is that when many voices say something, they often say the same thing. And then we think that we have.
So getting group think bias.
Group think, you know.
And attribution bias and confirmation bias.
That's right.
And halo bias and all of those. Alright, so the broader beneficial impact is really a very simple concept. Solve for one and extend to many.
That's right.
So it's not just solve for one and that's the end, but to think about solving for one with the capacity to extend to many. And don't assume that solving for one is only a unique outcome, but it may in fact have a broader benefit. In the way products and services are designed, is that right?
That's right. And it also means that we need to make sure that when we're um. The broader beneficial impact is also around the system itself. So. The language we use comes out of the inclusive playground movement, which is can I get there, can I stay there and can I play there?
That's, can we perhaps, because I know you've given.
Talk about that.
No, uh I think you have mentioned that and I'm not sure we went into the inclusive playground design in the statement. Um but I was going to ask you about some examples and I think the inclusive design in playgrounds. That is a a really good way of illustrating. Do you want to speak to. How inclusive design in developing play areas for children have been a tool to including. Kids with disability, kids from different backgrounds and really bring children in in that way.
I can't talk necessarily about actually designing an inclusive playground. But that modality, that can I get there, can I play there and can I stay there, is now embedded into all of the work we do. Everything from um policy design to um, you know, shop layout. Um and what we're talking about here is, can somebody get, it's great to have an inclusive playground, right? But if someone can't get to the playground, there's no buses, it's not accessible, it doesn't matter. So it's like with um recruitment. You know, you can have a great disability recruitment service, but if someone can't find it, can't access it, can't do the ad, well, then it's not. Inclusive. The second one, which is where we normally focus is can I play there? Do the tools actually work for us? And the third one, which again often is um forgotten, is can I stay here? And in a playground, that is, is this place safe? Is it enjoyable? And is the experience one that um brings me laughter? Like, is it a joyous experience to be here? Do I wanna be here? And that's really, really critical when we think about not only the outcome but also the process. So one of the questions we now ask in our co-design is, what what are you doing as a participant to make me feel comfortable? Because chances are you haven't told me what you're doing, all that extra work you're doing. And how can we make this a better space so that you don't have to mask, you don't have to do all of those things? So those three steps actually mean that we're taking into account the principles of universal design. There's too many of them for people to remember, the principles of inclusive design. And just generally good design and service design together in can I get there, can I play there, can I stay there? The other part of it, from your pers- the perspective of the playground itself, is playgrounds work. A good inclusive playground um works for everyone. So it doesn't matter if you're a baby, a grandparent. A young child, some children like the tactile pieces, some people will listen to the sound. Or a teenager who uses a playground at night. We all use that space in different ways. And some of us won't touch parts of that space, but they'll touch other parts. So we need systems that are what I call omni-channel, not digital first. We need to make sure we have every channel so that everyone has a way to participate. Um does that answer that?
It does. So I know you've you've given the commissioners two case studies in the statement. And I'm going to jump over because I want to ask you this. What you've described today, some people listening might go, that sounds interesting. But it also sounds like it will be very time consuming and very costly to implement. Now, you have undertaken some research or had some research uh done. On looking at the benefits of designing for everyone that sought to sort of test the assumption that this is. Too difficult, too costly, too time intensive. Or requires a particular level of great expertise and skill. So it's all a bit too hard. Can you tell us about the outcomes of the research and the report in terms of whether. Those assumptions about it being too costly, too hard, just too time intensive. Is that what the research told you?
Look, it does and it doesn't. So is it, does it cost more? To actually change the way we currently work than do things the way we've always done them? Yeah, sure, it does. Um and in fact, one of the case studies in that report talks about um a system in in Canada and it costs a lot more at the beginning. But within five years, actually, they were paying significantly less. Their systems were more nimble. So the long term cost is significantly less. When we think also about our customers in the four three areas that we looked at. Um by designing things inclusively, it's not about the eighteen point five percent of people with disability that you're gonna get as customers. Actually, it's, you're gonna get three to four times your intended audience. Because all of a sudden your products are working in in better ways for most people. So there are definite financial benefits. And if we looked at in that report, I think the statistics around um. The G D P, if we start to design things um inclusively, also looking at the burden of care. If we had more um young people able to finish education, um the impact on that for our society is um.
Just looking at, uh so the commissioners have got a copy of the report, but you give a a little snapshot of it, at paragraph fifty one.
Thank you.
So the report focused on higher education, domestic retail and banking for a number of reasons. So again, the report said this is where we think the research and the data tells us a problem might exist. So what uh was it that caused you to look at each of these three areas? Higher education, domestic retail and banking?
We looked at those areas for a number of reasons. Um the education one was really a no brainer. Because we know that if people can't. Um have that piece of paper that says they have a particular level of education, it's harder to get roles. Um in in the workplace, et cetera. And also, education is one of the first places where young people start to feel really excluded. And marginalised. It's really important to change that dynamic as well. In the report, we actually looked at what would happen if, if it was something like two to three percent. Not too sure of the exact number, of the young people who actually dropped out at sixteen or seventeen. Um because of disability were actually able to move on and get through tertiary education.
And what was the modelling and the finding on that?
Well, that um we'd actually have.
Is that paragraph fifty two A?
Yes, exactly. It's, I'm just looking at the numbers there. Um but I think it would be thirty percent more people would actually qualify. So when we think about these things, of course, there's a whole system would have to change for those people to be able to get through. Because they're not not getting through because they haven't got the ability. They're getting, they're not getting through because the system just doesn't work for them.
So you're looking at what the increase in higher education for excluded population groups.
Mm.
Could result in two hundred and twenty eight thousand additional tertiary qualifications. With an increase in employment and salaries by four point five billion annually. Did this research sort of look at a period of time over which that could be achieved? Or was this something that if it was a a direct result of an increase, I think you said by three percent, this would be the immediate effect?
That's right. So it was just the immediate effect.
Then you looked at uh domestic retail. So you're looking at retail products. No, and you said twenty percent of Australians are unable to access and use goods appropriately. And you said, if we look at the retail industry. That uh using inclusive design in relation to those products. There could be an increase of four billion dollars in household goods. Clothing, footwear and personal accessory sales. To be achieved by making those goods accessible to a larger number of Australians.
That's right.
Did that have a timeframe in it?
No, that was again looking at um the metrics around the purple, they call it the purple dollar, um and the international figures around that.
You then looked at financial services and said as a starting point, seven, almost seventeen percent of Australian adults. Are financially excluded. And noted that this was significantly higher than in com- comparable developed nations like the U K, Germany. Austria, France and Sweden. And you said if financial exclusion was reduced by twenty five percent. In eight hundred and thirty two thousand additional Australians. Uh would become financially included and an additional one point five billion dollars generated. For the financial sector through annual fees. That might be music to the banking sector. What, can I just ask you about that financial exclusion? Is this about accessing um the way in which financial products are marketed or used? Or is it something more about financial literacy?
It's, it's actually three things. It's financial literacy, um it's vulnerability. So the way, so these um statistics and this report, the reason we included the financial piece was. That the inquiries had just finished and we'd been looking at some of the work that had been done there. And when we think about the people who are most impacted um by the ability to make choices, the ability to advocate on their be. You know, for themselves, um their literacy. And then also the ability to access, literally just access, the banking sector. You know, um all of those things together.
What it turned, uh just I'm looking, I've one eye on the pocket. Uh looking at the levers for change. So you've spoken about the way in which inclusive design. Working with also universal design can actually make a material and practical change, sometimes quite quickly. But there's more that needs to be done around the systems, is that right? And you've identified in the statement some of the levers for change. So can I ask you about that?
Ye- yes, is there a. Ye- yes, is there a particular one you'd like me to focus on, just with an eye on time or?
Well, I think just, just, so commissioners, I'm up to paragraph fifty-three. So the first lever for change is just a simple thing about the, who we ask and who we bring in to the design process, is that right? So is this really a very proactive approach on edge users?
Yes, I think if you look at most of the levers here, there's a fundamental, I think, um philosophical shift behind them. And that is that, that we're not doing this because it's a good thing to do. We're doing this because we're living in a world that is based on antiquated rules and and theories. So the systems we've set up, the constructs, we, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, colonisation and feminism and and all of these other constructs. There is a fundamental construct around um the rights of people with different abilities. And some of that stuff is kind of baked into the world that we're in. So what we need to do is actually go, well, that's wrong. Now we need to actively change that unhidden bias that is baked into our world. So that's the reason that these levers are here. So things like the best insights for change come from the people who've been impacted. It's not just about learning their pain points and then going away and you designing something. The example I've given here is that of Braille. When sighted people tried to make the equivalent of Braille, they got it wrong many times. It took someone who um identified as blind to actually make a system to work. And, you know, it's the same for many other products as well.
And the the second one you've identified is designers, companies and governments all have a role to play by designing, investing and legislating difference in mind. Uh so inclusive design process becomes standard practice. So do, what what does that mean for, say, governments? We're going to look in the course of this afternoon and in tomorrow at how the Australia's disability strategy, the ADS, is working. We're going to ask some governments about what steps have been taken in the past year to implement the ADS. How have they evaluated the ADS? And uh for the, those in the room, don't be surprised if I ask about how inclusive design processes may be used by government in the ADS later today. So if we were looking at something like a large disability strategy that's got a ten-year lifespan in it, if we, if we put our inclusive design glasses on and we look at that document through the perspective in inclusive design, what should we expect to see in that document? To see governments having a role to play in using and and investing and legislating using inclusive.
I commend the work that's been done on the ADS and I, you know, and we have been involved in some of that work as well. Because one of the things that the ADS have done is have people with disability on all sides of that conversation and that strategy. I think that the things that we need to continue to do is not just ask people at the beginning of a process. And this is actually more a government issue than an ADS issue. Is that traditionally what governments do is they do lots and lots of consultation at the beginning, and come up with a decision, come up with a framework and then roll that out. What we don't often do is loop back to see whether or not what we've rolled out has any unintended negative consequences. And we're not able to very quickly or nimbly shift what we've done if we see something on the end. So I think that the thing that government needs to do better is, there's two things. One is the feedback loop, um so not just fix the problem for one person, but fix if the the strategy is wrong or one of the principles is wrong and we find that out two years from now, can we change it? Or are we stuck until the next time we go through the process again?
So that seems to suggest that universal uh design and in particular inclusive design is not just sort of something that you tick off as, we've done that at the beginning of the process, but the design continues through the life of a strategy or the way in which services are delivered. And like you said, you're always coming back to sort of check whether it's still fit for purpose or
That's right.
including the edge users.
So when we think about the way we design digital products and technology products at the moment, um we use iterative processes, so we're constantly designing and redesigning. That's why sometimes things get broken from an accessibility perspective, but it also means we're nimble. What we need to be careful about is that when we're using that design cycle, that we're not only focusing on what the world used to look like or our knowledge in our heads, but making sure we get the right insights at the right time through that process.
Now, you've also mentioned in the statement that you'd like to see in legislation, something a little more concrete. And you've used the example of the Disability Discrimination Act. And you'd like to see that updated in consultation with in a way that meets the requests of people with disability to be enforceable. So this is about implementing, but also meeting the intersectional experience with First Nations people and people with intersectional experience, is that right?
Ye- yes, and actually, that last question you asked, I think one of the other things we have to remember is, at the moment, intersectionality is really important. It's one of the things that people are talking about a lot. But we need both things when we're thinking about disability. We need the specific experiences of people with a, where there's a particular functional bias against that cohort. So if something is made for people who um who are, who, that excludes people who are blind or vision impaired, then we need that cohort and then we need the intersectional lens that comes with that cohort. We can't forget one for the other. Sometimes what seems to happen is that we'll move to going, oh, it's all about intersectionality. So all the intersectionality disability groups come in and the ones that are more medical-based get forgotten or vice versa. So we need to include both all the time. And then in terms of the act, I think um the idea of positive obligation is one that we would really espouse.
And so that's just there, so that's, you've talked about positive duty of care or positive obligation, paragraph fifty-nine. So that, a positive obligation means what?
It actually means that people have to move first to actually go, we need to do this, not be punished for doing or going, we um punished for not doing the right thing. Does that, have I explained that properly?
So what, so you're sa- saying that a positive obligation is something that acts to encourage people to think ahead?
Yes.
To anticipate and to plan to remove discrimination or biases in whatever their area of activity is. It could be delivery of services, it could be at work, it could be at school, is that right?
And so.
And moving from a model which is that these laws mostly kick in when something goes wrong?
Well, that's right. And I think also part of that is this idea that um a person has to actually make a complaint. So at the moment, um what happens is we have a complaints-based approach, not a systems-based approach. So when we think about those obligations, if we say that organisations have obligations to people, like some of our um, I guess, essential services do, then what we're doing is we're setting up a framework for organisations. And one of the things we hear a lot, particularly at the grassroots level in organisations, is we'd love to do more around accessibility or inclusion. But because it takes up more time and cost at the start, um they're told they can't. Right. So in fact, if the organisations had an obligation, it gives people within that organisation a way to fight the internal culture as well. And I think the other part of that for us is that the complaints-based approach assumes that the problem is about that individual and that individual not being able to access something, when really the problem is actually a systems-based issue. And so we would really advocate for a systems-based approach to um considering penalties and also incentives. So things like the way we do our tax or environment is for the greater public good. And we think accessibility in the broader sense of the world is the same. This is about the greater public good.
The very last thing I want to ask you about are the matters that you've spoken about, a paragraph sixty-one of the statement. And that's, as you say, all three tiers of Australian government need to lead by example and make accessibility and inclusion for disability commu- the disability community a priority. But you give the example of uh Canada having a first chief accessibility officer. And she is an independent special advisor that promotes positive dialogue between government, disability stakeholders, national and international organisations. So when you look at the current structures of Australian government, you say, we don't have someone like Steph Caddo, the chief accessibility officer in Australia, and you'd like to see something like that in Australia. Why? And what would you expect someone like a chief accessibility officer to be able to do?
So in Canada, they've taken the approach that they wanna barrier-free Canada and they have accessibility legislation. Um, her job is to hold government accountable to that legislation and make sure it happens. And also keep a spotlight on the area all the time. And the reason I think this is so important is that we've had, too long have we had a situation where um access is not considered a problem. And I guess my example is that if we had a house and we said, right, we've built this great house, but we don't have money or time or resources to buy a door. So there's this great window next to where the door should have been and you can just go through the window and it's not that complicated for you. People would laugh at us, but we do this every single day in all of our work. So the chief accessibility, like having someone like an accessibility officer, is to to shine a light on that and say, look, that's not okay, or why is there a problem here? And how can we actually think about removing the barriers or the systems issues also that are causing that? And to hold government to account to the legislation that they have created, as well as to, I think, the C D, um. I'm gonna get, sorry, my brain does funny things with with letters, but um the Convention of, you know, um the.
CRPD.
Thank you, CRPD. Um, because I think what happens is everyone has great intent. We write great things and then we go away and those things don't happen. If we look at how many sites in Australia, how many government websites are accessible, it's woeful. Yet the um, the need to put them in is is blatantly there. It's the same with um accessible um purchasing. The um information is there, the regulations are there, but no one's actually doing it. So having someone actually keep an eye on it for a while, actually make make sure it happens.
Well, um I've gone a little over time. I hope the commissioners will indulge their ex- in extra time. But thank you very much for your statement, but also uh explaining to us today some of these key and core concepts and showing us that this could actually be done in practice. So we're very grateful for your evidence. Thank you very much.
Half of all of the commissioners, your statement and for uh your evidence today and the information you've provided us with. The very clear explanations you've given of the various concepts that are embodied in your statement. So thank you very much indeed for the assistance you have provided.
Thank you. So Chair, just before we adjourn, could you receive Dr. Min's statement and the accompanying material into evidence?
Yes.
And mark the statement exhibit thirty-one point zero one two.
Yes.
And then the accompanying material, have the extra dots on it, so it will be thirty-one dot zero point one two point one and thirty-one zero point one two point two.
Yes, those three documents will be admitted into evidence with those marks. Thank you.
And could we take um an adjournment for fifteen minutes?
Yes, it's just after, it's just after five past eleven, so uh we'll resume at uh twenty past eleven.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms Eastman, I understand there's an appearance to be announced for.
Yes, there is. Ms Knowles, I think is appearing online.
Is there an appearance to the State of Victoria?
Yes, Mary, Commissioner.
Yes, well, we're having some difficulty hearing you. I'm not sure whether it's your end or ours.
Uh I'll try again. I'm appearing on behalf of the State of Victoria, if it pleases the Commissioner, Ms Knowles.
Thank you very much. We heard you that time, Ms Knowles. Thank you. Yes, Ms East.
Uh, so our next witness is Mary O'Hagan, who's the Executive Director of the Lived Experience Branch in the Victorian Department of Health, and she's joining us in the hearing room here in Brisbane.
Yes, O'Hagan, thank you very much. We're coming from Victoria to Brisbane in order to uh appear at the Royal Commission. We're very grateful to you for doing that. We have your uh detailed statement and we thank you very much for that as well. We have had the opportunity to read that and we have read it. Uh if you would be good enough to follow, uh, Ms Eastman, she will now ask you some questions.
So I want to start by confirming that you are Mary O'Hagan.
I am.
And you are the Executive Director of the Lived Experience Branch of the Department of Health in Victoria.
I am.
And you prepared a statement dated the second of December this year. And you've read through the statements. And there's one matter at paragraph fifty, uh and that part of the statement that we might clarify as we go along, but other than that, the state, the statement is true and correct. Is that right? Okay, so we um have asked you to come and tell the Royal Commission about taking on this role as Executive Director of something called Lived Experience Branch in the Victorian Department of Health. It's a a new and innovative model. But before I launch into what the department um has done and your role as Executive Director, I thought we should start with some of the terminology. And you've set this out at paragraph five of the statement. So that when we use the expressions lived experience, living experience, you want to have some precision in what we're talking about when we use those expressions. So can we start with that?
Yes. So in the area of psychosocial disability, lived experience refers to people who have direct experience of mental distress. Uh that could be mental illness or psychological distress. Um, uh and and also the people who they are close to, their families and supporters. Um, uh, uh, living experience, uh, we also refer to alcohol and other drugs because that's part of the responsibility of the Mental Health and Wellbeing Division. And we often refer to living experience as people who are currently uh going through those experiences. Um, I I would say I have lived experience because I'm not currently experiencing mental distress, but uh so that's the distinction is between the current experience and the past experience.
And when you've used the expression psychosocial disability in your statement and in the work that you do, uh what does that mean?
Psychosocial disability refers to people who have had uh significant life change in experience, uh experiences of mental distress. Uh and who have uh used the um, the the secondary or tertiary mental health services often. Um, and they, uh their their lives have been very impacted by their distress, often over a long period of time.
So I want to turn now to uh how you came to be the Executive Director of the Lived Experience Branch. Your professional background, which you've set out in the statement, was that you have used mental health services for several years as a a young woman. And so you've had that direct experience of admissions to psychiatric hospitals and the disruption in your life, in your studies, in your relationships, in your self-image. And you say in the statement, in your place in the world. And so you believe that the paternalistic and discriminatory ways services and societies responded to your distress delayed your recovery. So I'm not going to ask you about that part of your life, but uh may I thank you for sharing that to help uh the Royal Commissioners have a context that you bring to this role. this role, very direct experience and the insight of looking through the life course as to, uh, where those interruptions in your life have occurred. So you've learnt a lot from your experience and you consider that that lived experience has been part of some of your major qualifications to do the work that you've done in mental health and grassroots advocacy, peer support, entrepreneurialism for thirty five years. You are now a public servant. So what was the, um, approach that you took in moving from the world where you're working at, very much at that grassroots level into the work that you now are doing in the public sector and on policy?
Well, I, I've worked all over the place. In fact, my career hasn't been a ladder, it's been a jungle gym. So basically, uh, um, I followed the Royal Commission, I gave a witness statement to the Royal Commission. This is the Royal Commission into Victoria's mental health system. And I was very interested in the report and how much it emphasized lived experience. Uh, and when this job came up, the Executive Director position, I thought, well, I'm going to put my name forward for that job because I saw in it an unprecedented opportunity for lived experience to be embedded right in the core of the bureaucracy, um, driving decision making and the allocation of resources during a time of, um, very, very profound reform. And so I wanted to be part of that, so that's why I put my name forward.
Well, the final report for the Mental Health Royal Commission in Victoria was tabled in the Victorian Parliament on the second of March twenty twenty one. And it, there was a series of recommendations in the Royal Commission's report. And some of the reforms coming from that Royal Commission were aimed to redesign Victoria's mental health and wellbeing system. So it's structured around community-based model of care where people can access treatment, care and support close to their homes and support networks. So to facilitate this reform and the redesign, the department in working through implementing the recommendations of the Royal Commission established a new division in the Department of Health. And within that division, it's, uh, described as the Lived Experience Branch. Is that right?
That's right. Uh, and as far as we're aware, there's no other equivalent branch, uh, of that size anywhere else in the world that we can find. And the branch currently has twenty four F T Es in it. Um, and that is people who, um, have a CARA background or people with a, with a direct lived experience background.
All right. So, um, and I know you've set out in the statement the so- sort of more detailed structure of the department and the different branches, but I want to then come to the three units within the branch that you oversee. And they're described as the Lived Experience Policy Team, the Lived Ex- the Lived and Living Experience Advisory Hub and the Program Design and Management Team. So you've described each of those teams and then further in the statement, the key work undertaken by the branch. But could I start by asking you to tell the Royal Commission about the nature of the work and responsibilities of the Lived Experience Policy Team? And Commissioners, I'm at paragraph thirty one, sub-paragraph A.
So the Lived Experience Policy Team, uh, is responsible for, um, uh, for the more policy areas of work and, um, one of those is workforce development. There is a, a forty million dollar investment into lived experience workforce development in, in Victoria. Uh, and so that, that team is, is focusing a lot on that, but there are policy issues that come up um, quite often. Uh, there's one policy issue at the moment that is about, um, denying people who are on hospital leave, uh, because of COVID restrictions. And a concern that, um, that, uh, people, uh, that the hospitals are getting a bit overzealous with the, uh, with the inpatient wards on this or that there's no consistency across the state and how they do this. So we're doing a policy piece of work to try and, um, uh, get some, uh, some consistency across the state on that. So that's one issue.
And, uh, some of the other work that the Lived Experience Policy Team's doing, you've set out a paragraph thirty eight
Yeah.
of your statements. And I wanted to ask you about sub-paragraph C, which is embedding human rights within reform initiatives.
Yes.
According, uh, in accordance with the Victorian Charter of Human Rights and Responsibilities. And that work includes the development of a protocol and guidelines to support all staff across the division to embed the charter in their work. And I think towards the end of this, your statement, you've also uh, addressed some other aspects of the Victorian Charter and the CR P D. So I'm jumping a little bit.
Yep.
So I'm connecting sub-paragraph thirty eight C with, uh, picking up some of the observations that you've made at paragraphs ninety to ninety five of the statement.
Right.
So pausing there, we've got the Victorian Charter. The Victorian Charter's been in place for some time now in Victoria. What are you doing that might be different or innovative with the Charter? And also specifically bringing in the rights of people with psychosocial disability?
So people with lived experience find human rights frameworks very helpful because they, um, they, uh, outline, uh, inclu- inclusivity, non-discrimination and, um, a, uh, uh, you know, one of the things in mental health that they're very strong on, particularly the CR P D, is, um, a great caution, I guess, or, um, uh, on the use of compulsory interventions. So, so we, we find them very supportive to the issues that we're trying to address and the improvements we want to see in the lives of people. So the Victorian Charter of, uh, Rights and Responsibilities has been around since two thousand and six. Uh, and it very clearly states that public authorities must uphold the Charter. But one of the problems is that there is no routines in place within the division uh, for people to consider the Charter when they're developing policies or programs. And we think this is a real oversight, so we are getting a consultant in, a lived experience human rights expert, to, um, to talk, to educate the division on the Charter and then to help us develop routine processes and reminders for people to think about the Charter when they're, uh, developing policies and programs.
And the Victorian Charter is not disability specific.
No.
It covers a range of rights that might traditionally be called civil and political rights from international conventions. But the, that embedding of human rights within the reform initiatives is applicable to the impact on people with disability and particularly people with psychosocial disability. Is that right?
Absolutely. We think it's core and, and, um, the, the great advantage of the CR P D, of course, is that it is specific to people with disabilities. And I, I think in Victoria, because they've got the Charter, people often, um, forget about the CR P D, but we see that as a very key. It, it's a, it's a groundbreaking, um, uh, convention that we also, uh, want to raise awareness of.
Now, coming back to the other areas, there's the Lived and Living Experience Advisory Hub. And the hub provides strategic lived experience advice to the lived experience executive and to all staff across the division.
Yes.
So how does this work in practice? What does the advisory hub do?
So the advisory hub, um, provides advice across all the reform initiatives and there have been up to two hundred of them, uh, running at one time. And what happens is that the people who are starting the initiative in another branch uh, come to the advisory hub and say, well, w- we need you to be part of the team that is developing this. And the advisory hub then, uh, joins that team and, um, uh, gives, uh, advice and feedback based on, um, lived experience aspirations and perspectives.
So the Chair, the Chair has asked whether you could provide some, uh, examples of recent work and without disclosing anything that might be confidential, is there an example that you can give the Royal Commissioners about how the advisory hub might work in practice?
So in Victoria at the moment, um, there is a service setting up a new bed-based service that has come out of the Royal Commission into mental health services, uh, recommendations. Uh, and the, uh, people in the advisory hub said, well, this, they haven't done any co-design with the people who are going to be using this type of service. And also they said, um, that, that, um, the, the people who are designing it, that are designing it like a sort of secure inpatient unit and not the sort of, what the, the term is, subacute unit that it is supposed to be. Uh, and so they escalated that, uh, to, uh, me and the directors within the, um, unit, um, the, the clinical hub got involved. And now there is going to be, uh, a major alteration of that process. Uh, so that, that particular bed-based service, um, and if we hadn't, if the lived experience people hadn't been there, it would have just continued to go down this very unfortunate track. And we've managed to bring it back to its original purpose and to the sort of place that people with lived experience would like to stay in.
I think, uh, you heard Dr Amin's evidence earlier this morning. Would that be an example of what she described as the edge users?
Yes, that would be, that would be an example of that, um, uh, very much so, yep.
All right. Then the third area is the Program Design and Management Team. And this team is responsible for the implementation of the key recommendations made by the Mental Health Royal Commission's interim and final reports related to the establishment of the new lived experience-led entity and services. And at paragraph forty, you've identified the key work undertaken by that team, which is, uh, referable to some specific recommendations. Now, with, again, without asking you to go into anything that might be sensitive or overly confidential, um, what has been the experience of taking a set of recommendations from the Royal Commission and actually realising that there are any suggestions or advice you can give about the way in which that process operates?
Uh, well, we have been true to our, um, we've been true to our, um, values and we have been, uh, very much co-designed these initiatives with lived experience communities. Um, one of them is a lived experience residential service that will be, uh, an alternative to a hospital admission for people. Um, and we, we went into a co-design phase, uh, with people, uh, with lived experience, the sort of people who would use a place like this. Um, and then, uh, we now have a, a provider to provide that service and we're going into a bit more detailed co-design. Um, and this process really, um, has been very important for, uh, understanding uh, exactly it is what the users of the service will want. Uh, and doing the very best we, we can within certain constraints to, to make sure that that happens.
Okay. So what do, just conscious of the time, move to an aspect of the work that involves bringing people with lived and direct experience in. There is the Lived and Living Experience Workforce Advisory Group. And does that bring together lived experience workforce disciplines, again, to advise the division on lived and living experience workforce needs?
Yes, so there is, um, uh, this advisory group has four kind of, um, um, groups in it. One, one is, um, the, the consumers or the people who have direct experience. One is the families, uh, but also, um, there's an A O D element and a mental health element. And, um, as I said, there was, um, a forty million dollar best investment going into lived experience workforce development in Victoria over four years. And this group is there to advise on that investment.
Oh, one, uh, matter that we asked you about was how does the branch and the work that you do incorporate consultation, co-design and co-production? These are expressions used. And you've addressed this, Commissioners, you'll see this from paragraph forty seven onwards. So the branch and the division more broadly applies consultation, co-design and co-production using what's called the Lived Experience Engagement Framework. And that was published by the former Mental Health Branch in June twenty nineteen. So I want to ask you about this framework and its elements. And I think we've given, uh, the Commissioners a, a document that you've got. But you've got a summary of the elements of this in your statement. So this is the point that we wanted to clarify. So if we start, can we go to paragraph fifty?
Yes. Yes, paragraph fifty. We just want to clarify that the I A P two framework, um, uh, the headings in that are inform, consult, involve, collaborate and empower. We have superimposed, um, co-design and co-production on, uh, on collaboration and empower. Uh, and, uh, I'm.
Is, could I jump in? You weren't sure that, um, is superimposing and to collaborate as actually co-design? Or that empower is co-production? So I just wanted to talk about what they actually mean rather than necessarily have the words in brackets as.
So you want to know what co-design and co-production mean?
So can we, what we might do is sort of walk through the steps. So first step is inform. And that process, it has two aspects. One, it's pu- it's public participation into the process of, of informing. But it's also a promise to keep people informed. So there's a two-way aspect on inform. Is that right?
Can, can I give a, an overall comment on, on this framework? So, um, one of the, we're moving on from this framework, uh, and the reason, uh, we've, we no longer find it an adi- a totally adequate framework, and this is, um, reflected in the, uh, in the statement, is that the voice or, uh, that the, that the words inform, consult, involvement and power is and is the voice of the powerful party.
Hmm.
And we don't think that reflects partnership.
So what do you want to do to change this in terms of how you meet the inclusion involvement, whether it's called consult, inform, collaborate and power?
Well, we think the language of co-design and, uh, and co-production do better at, um, uh, because the, that, that sort of reflects a partnership approach, whereas the, the framework, the participation spectrum really is the powerful party deciding uh, when people will be involved, um, uh, how they'll be involved and, uh, and things like that. And we, and we, and a partnership is where the parties come together to both determine those issues.
So the focus is to move, uh, to a more partnership model.
Yes.
Where there may be more, so equality in terms of how power is used and exercised. So one element of that is co-design and. And you've addressed co-design with, with that link to collaborate at paragraph fifty-five to fifty-seven of the statements.
Yes, yeah.
So if we substitute the word co-design for collaborate, what can you tell the Royal Commissioners about the way in which you approach co-design? To have a practical element to how you do co-design?
So, um, wh- uh, one of the uh, uh initiatives, the recommendations from the Mental Health Royal Commission was to set up eight family uh lead centres throughout Victoria. And what we, we, um, we asked the peak body for mental health carers in Victoria called Tandem. Uh, we funded them to go around the state and to talk to people about what they really wanted uh from these centres. Uh, and they sent us back a, a report on what people said they wanted. That then informed, very heavily informed the, the uh, the commissioning of those uh centres. So it, it, it uh was reflected in the documents, the tender documents. And so the um, the applicants then needed to show how they would uh, how they would fulfil the wishes of the carers around Victoria through that process.
And you've set that out uh i- in a little more detail in paragraph seventy-two to seventy-five of the statements. One of the questions Commissioner Bennett has um asked is is capacity building needed for the advocates? Or if I look at those involved in the co-design, families, carers and supporters? Does there need to be capacity building in uh that group to better support their input into co-design processes with government? And if so, how can this capacity building be achieved?
I th- I think in the case of the uh families and supporters around Victoria being involved in co-design, the capacity building wasn't needed there. It was needed for the government people to understand how to um, how to work in a new way with people. Uh, and um if you think about, uh, you know, the traditional leaders and power holders and decision-makers, um, often it's that group that needs to unlearn and relearn in order to um uh go into a, a more power-sharing relationship with groups than they traditionally have.
And how is that group had to learn and unlearn?
It's been difficult, I think. Um, for people with lived experience, it's, it's not so hard because we've been doing this all along. But for um colleagues in the division, uh, and they're, and on the whole, they're very willing. They want, they want to do this right. Uh, but they've had to, uh, I mean, we, we do, um, that, you know, they have training opportunities and they get support to do that. And that's one of the, that's one of the um services that the advisory hub can offer people. But there's nothing like just jumping in the deep end and uh, and trying it out. Uh, and, you know, the lived experience community, uh communities can be pretty harsh in their criticism. So um sometimes there's a, people are very fearful of doing new things because they're worried about being criticised. And uh, that's a hurdle that we need to help people get over as well.
Okay. On co-production, uh in your statement, you've described the example of co-production, which is the matter that you spoke about a few moments ago, the Lived Experience Residential Service.
Yeah.
And that's an example of co-production that's been utilised, taking the recommendations from the Mental Health Royal Commission. That process of co-design, but the actual production of where and how people live. Is there anything else you want to add to the way in which you uh reflect on that use of co-production to get a, a good outcome? Or is it still an outcome that's um yet to be finally determined?
Yes, it's an outcome that's yet to be finally determined. But I, but I, I think, um, as the previous witness said, that co-design is over, well, it's overused and used badly. Um, uh, and uh often when people are saying we're doing co-design, they really mean we're, we're doing consultation. Um, but, but co-production, the, the way I understand co-production is that co-design is a phase in co-production. Co-production uh starts with understanding what the problem is um, and what people's uh needs are. The design is, is about um a kind of uh collaborative way, a power-sharing way of designing a solution, where the people most involved have the greatest power to determine that. And then, and then there's co-delivery, which is um, uh, you know, when the initiative is set up, how do we work together to deliver it? And then there's co-evaluation, which is, um, uh, how can we, uh, what can we learn from this that we can use to uh shape other similar initiatives or improve the one that we're al- already delivering? And so I think co-production um has a much larger and it's part of that, that whole cycle, whereas co- co-design just tends to be part of the cycle.
So one um aspect that's important in this work is that for families, supporters, advocates and people with lived or living experience is if they are part of the co-design or co-production, they don't do that on a volunteer basis. So they are remunerated um for their time and their knowledge, their skill and their wisdom. Is that right? And it, why is that important? And we hear a lot that there's this sort of expectation on people with disability or advocates to participate or be invited into a consultation process, really from the goodness of their hearts because they'll be the ultimate beneficiaries. And so this shift that you've taken to see remuneration and respect for the participants, why is that important?
It's, it's important because they're providing essential expertise into the um uh into the development or the maintenance or the evaluation of, of an initiative. Um, and uh, uh, the other, the other thing that happens is that you've got people with different types of expertise in a room. It seems very discriminatory if um a, a group of people with expertise aren't remunerated and everyone else is on a comfortable salary. That would be unjust. And so it's always been incredibly important that uh people's contribution and expertise is recognised in this way.
I want to ask you just about evaluation. And I know for uh the work that you're doing, it's early days. Uh, you're, you're into that process. And i- is the, the sort of next steps or the next issues really starting to evaluate some of the uh programmes, some of the policies and the way in which the services are delivered on the ground?
Yes, uh, I mean, evaluation uh is something that is continuous. I think that's uh, it's not something you decide to do after you've started delivering. It's something that, um, uh, we, we need to have points along that cycle of co-production where we're um evaluating all the time. Um, we're not quite at the phase yet where we're doing those kind of formal evaluations of how delivery is going at, at this point. But we see that as a crucial uh part of that cycle. And um we uh, uh, we, uh, you know, we're really wanting to get lived experience-led evaluation. If that's not possible, we would only uh choose evaluators who had uh lived experience uh people as a key part of their team.
Right. Now, I'm conscious of the time and your need to get you to the airport. Uh, you've, we asked you about whether uh you could reflect on whether there were any barriers to the work that you've done using lived experience in consultation, co-design, co-production processes. And you've given us a very frank account in the statement at paragraphs a hundred and two and following. Uh, one that I want to ask you about is the pace of reform. And the challenge has been the pace of reform during, because of timelines set by the Royal Commission, plus Covid, plus the need to get this all working well, the co-production, the co-design, the consultation, and then setting up how you might evaluate. How do you balance the pace or the wish for urgent and quick change with actually delivering the work that you do on the ground?
Well, as a public servant, um, we don't decide on the pace of change. That's a sort of, that's a political decision. One of the thi- one of the worries about um the pace of change, uh, and these was, these were largely set by the uh timetables um, that were part of the Royal Commission uh recommendations, was that we couldn't get proper co-design and co-production processes into place. And this caused quite a lot of um, uh anger among lived experience communities. They felt that um, they felt that they were once again being kind of, uh, you know, that the process wasn't, wasn't good. Uh, um, but at the same time, it was very difficult to achieve the, a good standard and, and, or to achieve co-design um, with it, with, with the timeframes that we were asked to operate in.
Reflecting back on the time that you've been in the role and thinking about the breadth of different lived and living experience of disability. Uh, are you able to comment on whether or not the model of a lived experience branch as it is in health in Victoria would be a model that may be beneficial in other government departments where there is that frontline delivery of social services for people with disability? And I'm thinking there, education, housing, maybe transport, but as, or aspects of the justice system. Have you got, if you, if it's outside your knowledge and expertise, I don't want you to comment on it, but if you'd like to sort of share a view on that, Commissioner Galbely would um be keen to know what you'd like to say about that.
Well, it's really interesting. Part of me thinks, why didn't we do this before? I mean, why doesn't every government department have a, a, a section of it that's devoted to lived experience? So that's my, that's my question, is how come we just thought of this in, in the mental health area at least now? I do know that um the other departments uh, uh, within Victoria are taking a lot of interest in the lived experience branch and are wanting to um see how they can, how they can say, use that as a model or adapt it as a model uh for their, for their own um, for their own departments. That, that's an area of, of quite a lot of interest.
And when you say, why hasn't this been done before? Commissioner Galbely's raised that there is the notion of a consumer leader, and that's well-known in the psychosocial disability community. Is part of the work that you're doing uh addressing the role of consumer leaders or is it something different?
Um, so, it can, um, I'm not quite sure I understand that question.
Well, I might ask, um, Commissioner Galbely uh in relation to the, just clarifying what, what you wanted to ask by consumer leader in psychosocial disability.
Yes, I'm just very struck by the notion of consumer expert and consumer leader that's so well-established in psychosocial disability. And wondering about the extension of it to other disability and including peer work and, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, well, well, I think, um, it's, it's incredibly, it's very, it's just so important that in, that, that that we are seen as leaders. Um, and I, and I don't just mean in government or in advocacy, but I mean as leaders in our own lives. I ju- I just think, uh, for too long, we've been uh the passive recipient of, uh, you know, paternalistic families, services, government agencies and bureaucracies. And really, we need to be active agents at all these levels. So I don't know if that answers your question. Yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who you meant by we.
We, as in people with a psychosocial disability or lived experience of, of uh mental distress?
Well, Commissioners, um, uh, I would like to ask Miss Hagan, Miss O'Hagan a lot more questions. But I thank you very much for the very detailed statement and for uh participating in the Royal Commission today. So thank you very much, Miss O'Hagan.
Yes, and on behalf of the Commissioners, we also thank you for your attendance and for the statement and for the uh uh additional evidence that you've given today. Thank you very much indeed.
And uh I think Miss O'Hagan needs to move speedily to the airport.
Please, please feel free to speedily go to the airport.
Uh, and Commissioners, could you receive the statement into evidence and mark the statement as exhibit thirty-one point zero one three?
Yes, the statement will be netted into evidence and given the marking of exhibit thirty-one point zero one three.
So we just need a five-minute adjournment to reconstitute the hearing room and Mr. Horsley will be the next witness. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll adjourn.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, the next witness is Mr. Peter Horsley. He is the founder of Remarkable and he has taken an oath before joining us today.
Mr. Horsley, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission today in Brisbane uh to give uh evidence. Thank you also for your statement, which we have received and uh we have each uh read. We're very appreciative of the, the assistance you're providing to the Royal Commission. So thank you very much. I'll now ask Miss Fraser to ask you some questions.
Mr. Horsley, could you please state your full name for the commission?
My name is Peter Horsley.
And you have sworn a statement to the commission dated thirty October two thousand and twenty-two?
I have.
And you are familiar with the contents of that statement?
I am.
And that is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes, it is.
Commissioners, by way of background, Remarkable is a startup accelerator associated with the Cerebral Force Alliance. It is committed to developing tech startups which positively impact the lives of people with disability. In considering the work of Remarkable and the tech startups that they support, it is important to remember that these types of technological advancements are not about curing disability, but rather about harnessing the power of technology to provide solutions for people with disability, which enhance their personal choice, control and independence. Before I turn to ask Mr. Horsley some questions, I would like to play a short video clip. The clip is about Polyspine, an invention that was developed by Riley Saban and his father Clint with the support of Remarkable. Riley is a teenager from the north coast of New South Wales who lives with cerebral palsy. Polyspine provides its users with the physical support to enable them to participate and be included in a wide range of social and recreational activities from which their physical disability may otherwise exclude them.
Presumably without the video.
That's correct.
Very good.
It will be on our screens in any moment.
I'm Riley and I'm the co-founder of Polyspine along with my dad Clint. To start, I'm going to tell you how this crazy journey began. My whole life I have been active. My family always found a way to include me, even though I had to overcome my challenges. We always find a way so I can participate. We began to realise that there are people like me who also want to be extremely adventurous and independent while supported with comfort. It isn't my physical disability that prevents me from participating. It's the man-made environment. With Polyspine, we can participate and experience the activities that most take for granted. The opportunities are endless without a support system. Oh, did I mention that I want to skydive? Now, I'm going to hand it over to the other co-founder, my dad, Clint.
Is a wearable torso and head support system which provides comfort and it's easy to use. It's modular in form. It fits a range of attachments for different activities. Our unique design has the ability to follow the front-to-back curve of the wearer's back. We have been recognised by the International Searching Authority as a new invention and we're currently taking steps to make this, this, uh, design global.
Inclusive audio description of what we just saw on the screen. Riley is a teenage boy wearing tan-coloured long pants and a black short-sleeve collared shirt. He is giving a speech on a stage that has plants and purple lighting. He is using an electric wheelchair and an augmentative and alternative communication device. He is smiling while giving the speech. The speech is complemented by a slideshow which contains the following slides. First, a black and white illumination of a person using a wheelchair sitting in darkness next to a window. The slide reads, are you comfortable? Second, a video of Riley sitting on a stand-up paddleboard in the water with the Polyspine product and smiling at the camera. Third, a video of Riley and his father on the stand-up paddleboard. Riley sits on the front and his father is on his knees behind him, rowing across the water with a beach in the background. The final slide is a video of Riley in a home, standing and squatting with the support of the Polyspine product. Riley's dad is sat on the floor in front of him, bracing Riley's legs with his knees. The second clip that we saw is a split screen of Riley's dad Clint, who is wearing tan-coloured long pa- long pants and a black short-sleeve collared shirt with the Polyspine logo. The speech is complemented by a slideshow that contains the following slide. A picture of the black Polyspine product, which is a black device that has segment, that has segments similar to a spine. The slide reads Patent Recognised New Invention. I would like to turn to you now, Mr. Horsley, and thank you for joining us here today. Mr. Horsley, if I could ask you, um, to start by telling us a little about, a little bit about Remarkable and the programmes that it offers.
Certainly. Uh, so Remarkable is a division of Cerebral Palsy Alliance. It was an initiative of Cerebral Palsy Alliance that started in twenty sixteen. And we run a number of programmes now. Uh, it didn't start that way, but we first started, uh, running a, uh, an event called a Design-A-Thon, uh, and that was, uh, commenced in twenty fourteen. Uh, and that programme, uh, supports innovators, entrepreneurs, hackers, makers, creators, both with and without disability to tackle different problems. Uh, we take people through a, a co-design process and an inclusive design process over a period of four weeks. Uh, the second of our programmes is one called the Remarkable Accelerator. This is the heart of what Remarkable does. And that is about, uh, creating, uh, technologies and services that can scale and be commercialised. Uh, we give, uh, founders support through mentoring, uh, some, some seed investment as well as, uh, a, a growing network of people that can help that product and service succeed. Recently, we've also introduced a third programme in between Design-A-Thon and the Accelerator called Launcher. And that programme is there to support founders, uh, who are at the very earliest stages of creating their products and services. They could be researchers, they could be, um, uh, just at the very idea stage of their product. And it is really about validating, uh, that, that problem that they're trying to solve and also then, uh, helping to validate the solution that they've got. Uh, additionally, we've also started a fellowship programme as well. And the Jessica King Fellowship Programme was actually created in memory of one of our founders, uh, who sadly did pass away. Uh, and she came through our very first cohort and her name was Jessica King. Uh, she talked about the ways that sometimes she felt like a fraud or an impostor in being a, a founder. And, uh, and it, it became, I guess, part of her identity that they, she then said, oh, actually I am. I, she claimed that identity, that she was a founder. And, uh, we wanted to see more founders with disability in our programmes, more founders who were, uh, who have lived experience of disability, who are creating new products and services. And so we run that programme now as a six-month mentoring programme. Uh, it also provides some monetary support for, um, the individual's own study, uh, to invest into themselves.
Mr. Horsley, we've just seen on the screen an example of Polyspine, which is one of the products that was, um, developed with the assistance of Remarkable. Are you able to provide us with any other concrete examples of technology that has been, um, developed with the assistance of Remarkable?
Absolutely, yeah. There's, so, uh, to date, uh, through the Accelerator Programme, there's been forty-eight companies that have come through the Accelerator Programme, through our Launcher Programme, uh, which just started this year. We've had twenty-six companies come through that, so, uh, all up seventy-four. Uh, so another example, uh, might be one called Bookbot, uh, that was created by another father and son, uh, who, um, was trying to figure out ways that, uh, to assist teachers in, in helping, uh, uh, their child who, who might have dyslexia to read. Uh, the current best practice around that is to have a teacher sit alongside the student and to be able to, uh, point out words and to be able to assist in, in helping them to read. Uh, this obviously is difficult to do, uh, when a teacher is also responsible for other students in the classroom. Uh, and so they have developed a, a, a product that actually listens to, um, the young person uh, or the person with, uh, dyslexia to, uh, listen to them as they read and to, uh, help correct and to help, uh, provide assistance. Um, and it's been shown to have really great outcomes. Um, one more would be, uh, a product called Wheel Easy. Uh, Wheel Easy was created by a wheelchair user who, uh, didn't want his, uh, social life to skip a beat. Um, uh, and, and, and recognise the importance of being able to, um, to go out with friends and family. Uh, but oftentimes, uh, accessible information was, uh, was disparate, uh, if it, if it existed at all, uh, or was in multiple places that, uh, that lots of research had to be done beforehand. And so what they are trying to do is to aggregate that information, uh, for, um, for locations, restaurants, uh, to be able to, uh, express to people what, uh, accessibility information is available for that, uh, for that particular venue.
And presumably, and in, um, a, a product such as that would have flow-on effects for people that are not just those that are perhaps permanently disabled, but also those that may be injured or require physical assistance.
All of these, uh, quite a number of these solutions actually do have, uh, uh, ongoing impacts, uh, and further impacts than just the initial target market that they've already tried to reach.
Can you, um, tell the commission, in your view, what are the benefits of involving people with disability in all stages of the process, um, of development, um, in the Remarkable programme?
So we've heard quite a bit, uh, in, uh, the hearings today, um, and, and other times as well about the importance of co-design, but that co-design, uh, it's not enough just to have co-design, that co-production and co-creation, uh, is also important. And so, uh, we want to make sure that any of these, uh, products and services are actually meeting the needs that they're intended to, to meet and not to have any unintended consequences of other areas of exclusion that they might cre- create. And so if they are not being created by someone with lived experience of disability themselves, then we highly encourage, uh, each of our startup founders, uh, to be ensuring that they are, um, consulting with the disability community and not just designing with to tick a box, but to actually then think about that as a, an embedded part of how they create their business. How do they think about marketing messages in ways that are inclusive? How do they think about creating culture and values in their businesses that are inclusive? Uh, it shouldn't just be a one-off opportunity. Uh, and I, I think that we, uh, sometimes ignore the incredibly rich history of products, services and technologies that have been first designed, um, by people with disability or strong allies of people with disability. And we want to help recover some of that, uh, thinking in, in, in thinking about, uh, new products and services. So if we think about things even that we use every single day, like the typewriter, like, like the keyboard, uh, initially came from the typewriter, uh, and was designed, uh, to allow someone who had a vision impairment to be able to type legible letters. Uh, even S M S designed first to allow, uh, deaf students to be able to communicate to each other. Uh, one of the architects of the internet is known as Vince Surf, uh, who, uh, was profoundly deaf, uh, by about the age of, of eleven or twelve and was trying to work out ways while he was a researcher at university that he didn't have to pick up the telephone to talk to research colleagues. And so developed some of the earliest internet protocols that of course has gone on to influence not just the way that we work, but the way that we live, work and play now, uh. So I think there is this rich history there that we've forgotten about or, or sometimes ignored. And we need to return to that to make sure that people with disability are given the rightful place that they should actually have.
And to what extent are the, um, inventions that are developed in conjunction with Remarkable actually prompted in the first instance by people with disability? Are people with disability bringing the ideas to Remarkable or, or is the disability interface something that comes later?
A bit of both. So, uh, so oftentimes, if it is not someone, uh, bringing this and experiencing some of the challenges that, uh, that some of these barriers might be, uh, creating in the first instance. Uh, we oftentimes do have someone who is a strong ally of someone with disability, uh, whether that be a family member, whether it be someone that has worked in the industry, uh, and, and seen some of the challenges that we currently are still facing when we're not designing for a world, uh, that is inclusive and accessible. Uh, if that's not the case, then we are, it is, it is a, a strong part of the programme that we provide and the supports that we provide is that we make sure that you leave with an understanding of the importance of co-creation, of co-design, of ongoing, uh, uh, input from the disability community in your products, designs and services.
You've just, um, mentioned that it's a strong part of the programmes and supports that you design, that there is that, um, uh, um, interface or in connection with people with disabilities. Can you break that down for me? How, how does this actually occur? What does this look like?
So we ask, how many, uh, people with disability are you consulting with? Uh, we get baseline information around that. We run masterclasses as well around how to do good co-design and co-creation. How do you, um, set up a great user testing s- strategy around your products and services that is inclusive, uh, as well? So there are a number of different touchpoints that we have throughout our programmes that encourage our founders to think that way.
And what if a founder was to say to you when asked, how many, um, people are you, um, communicating or connecting with who have disability, if they were to say none or very few? Wha- what then? What happens then?
Uh, so there probably could be a question as to whether they would actually get into the programme if they weren't willing to, um, to make some changes to the way that they were designing their products and services.
And is there a, um, intention to move to a position where every step of the process involves a person with disability?
Yeah, well, it's interesting. We, we just hosted a, a technology summit in San Francisco, uh, in November and one of the, uh, speakers at that summit was talking about the importance of co-design and co-creation and actually asked a question to the audience. Uh, should you actually be designing a product, should you be leading a product if you do not have someone with lived experience of that particular, uh, product or service on your team? And so really trying to push the envelope of, uh, are you in the right position in terms of the people you are engaging with to be designing that product, technology or service?
So that's looking at it from the founder's perspective. How does Remarkable create those connections from the person with disabilities' perspective? How do you actively identify that person and seek their input?
Uh, so we, uh, do have, in the beginning, it, uh, we had, uh, a beta testing group. It was a list of people that, uh, put up their hand and said we wanted to test products. Now we have a slightly more formalised, um, process of that. We do have a, a, a great disability community, not just here in Australia, but now around the world as well. Um, so for instance, we've just been through our application process for our next Accelerator Programme in twenty twenty-three. And we had a number of people with disability who were invited to give feedback on technologies and services that could be relevant to them, that they bring, uh, relevant experience around that, helping to give their understanding of how relevant that is, uh, as a solution for them. And, uh, and we pay our, our, uh, each time we have someone with disability, um, either giving input as user testers or giving input in this instance, uh, giving feedback on uh, applications for an accelerator programme. We, we pay them for their time.
And how do you identify those people who you seek input from?
Uh, so a lot of it is, is through the network. So people who know people, um, we continue to, um, a- amass, I guess, a, a list of, uh, of people who are willing to give feedback and who, uh, or who are willing to, um, participate in our programmes. And, uh, but that is an ever-growing evolution. We hope to have more and more people, uh, involved in all of our programmes at all stages.
Does, um, Remarkable connect, um, with what I will call similar, you may say to me not similar, um, but organisations such as Technical AIDS for the Disabled, now called, um, Solutions in Victoria?
Uh, so we, we're aware of their, of their work. Um, uh, I believe in New South Wales, we've actually, uh, our organisation, Cerebral Palsy Alliance, has helped to, um, house them at, at a particular point in time as well. Um, we'd see ourselves as, uh, um, slightly different. Um, my understanding of their work, um, which is fantastic work, by the way, my understanding of their work is, uh, that they develop individualised solutions for, um, for people who um, might be adapting equipment or technology. And what we're trying to do is to see solutions that are brought to the market at scale. So how do we see these? Not just providing a solution for one person, but how do we see them providing solutions for, uh, for many, many people?
Uh, in your statement at paragraph fifty-one, you provide a table, um, that reflects the, uh, participation, um, rates of people with disability. Um, and with respect to the accelerator, um, and launcher programme specifically, um, with four out of twenty participants being people with disability, uh, in the accelerator cohort in twenty twenty-two. Um, and you, in your statement, you, um, also say at paragraph twenty-nine that you have looked at running a launcher programme exclusively for founders with disability in two thousand and eighteen, but you did not have sufficient interest for the programme? Can you tell the commission what is being done to increase the number of programme participants with disability in these two programmes? program participants with disability in these two programs?
It's a really great question. And it's something that we're very, very conscious of as well is that we want to see greater numbers of people with disability who are founding their own companies for some of the reasons that we've given before. So part of the impetus of running the Jessica King Fellowship program was to start even earlier and to be able to give exposure of the entrepreneurial ecosystem to more people with disability. So we're doing that at a small scale at this stage, but as we continue to grow that program, we hope to see more people with disability who are already interested in entrepreneurship. The other thing that we are trying to do around that is to increase our networks as well. And so perhaps even through this Royal Commission, we'll be able to continue to meet and be introduced to people who are potentially founders. We haven't got a really large marketing budget, so there are still a lot of the Australian population and a lot of the global population who don't know who we are. And so we hope that we can grow the awareness of the opportunity that we've got to support founders with disability. We see that as the lifeblood of innovation going forward. So it's not where we want it to be, but we're certainly making efforts to increase that number.
So the awareness of the program amongst the disability community is, to a large extent, currently dependent on word of mouth?
It is, correct.
You've identified in your statement a number of key funding providers or partnerships, including Telstra, the New South Wales Department of Family and Community Services and the like. How has Remarkable gone about securing these partnerships?
So they're things that we've initiated. We've reached out to try and garner support for our programs. And so we harness putting in proposals, requesting that we have corporate organisations, sometimes government organisations, to see if they can support the work that we're doing and to be able to help fund the operations costs. We also do general fundraising as well towards supporting these programs. So events, also participatory programs that garner the support from the general community in supporting some of the programs that we do as well.
And in seeking those private partnerships, what is it that you emphasise in relation to your program? What is it that you find private partners are particularly drawn to in relation to the program?
So I think a couple of things. They are particularly interested, I think, an area of interest in the broader community at the moment is diversity, equity and inclusion. While sometimes disability perhaps is left off that list or is not immediately thought of around diversity, equity and inclusion, it is an area that is garnering some interest from corporates. I think they also see the role of innovation and the role that it could play and the potential that it can play in corporate business. And so this approach that we're using of venture building and creating new, I guess, pockets of ongoing sustainable impact is something that they get from a business operations perspective as well. So I think that there's a few different reasons why they might be interested in supporting.
How do you consider that private sector investors can continue to support the programs?
So in a number of different ways. So financial is obviously one of the ways that they can continue to support and we continue to fundraise to be able to help us to do that. But also they have people within their organisations who have disability and who can be potential mentors or coaches for some of our startups. And they can also provide particular subject matter expertise, helping founders as they try to navigate the really, really difficult role of creating a startup. It is a really difficult process and we hear lots of stories of the number of startups that do fail. And so what we try to do with the support programs that we run is to look at some of the pitfalls that startups often may fall into and to try and help them navigate those.
Do you consider that private sector companies, or to what extent do you consider that private sector companies consider people with disability currently as viable consumers?
That's a really great question. And I think it's hard to generalise across all corporates. There are certainly some who get it, some who are saying that we've probably for too long ignored that as a target market and thought of disability more as the realm of charities and not-for-profits. But I think some of the corporate organisations are starting to say it is an underserved market. Our messages aren't particularly targeted towards being more inclusive around that. And I think we heard evidence earlier around the purple pound. There are reports around the purchasing power of people with disability and their immediate families as well of being in the realm of around thirteen trillion dollars globally. And so I think that there's starting to be some more recognition across the board in corporate organisations that this is actually a very valuable and valid target market as well.
Do you consider that that recognition of value is a lever that can be utilised to facilitate further investment and further development?
Absolutely, it should be. I think, you know, if organisations are ignoring this market, they're missing out. They're missing out on talent, they're missing out on customers. They are missing out on making sure that people see themselves as users of their products as well. And so I think it's a missed opportunity for organisations who aren't thinking about that.
To the extent that some innovators may well be designing products for people with disability but may not be fundamentally including people with disability in that process, do you consider that there's a power imbalance between the innovator and a person with disability?
Sometimes there is. And certainly we've seen this both in the venture capital world where, again, we've had to try to to communicate to the venture capital community more broadly that this isn't just the realm of charities and not-for-profits, that there's actually a viable target market here. And it is not a niche, a small niche that needs to be kind of dealt with in that way. And certainly the hope with us advocating in that way is that they see more and more the value that they can have in investing in this space. If we are currently not someone with disability ourselves, there is a very high chance that at some point in our lifetime we will be. And so if we are not designing for our current selves, if we're not investing in products and services for our current selves, then we could be designing for our future selves in that regard. And so we are trying to help reframe this conversation as well, away from only being seen as, and I think the CRPD kind of puts it best, that away from objects to subjects. People with purchasing power, people with agency, who should have control and should have choice.
In your work with Remarkable, have you seen that power imbalance between any of your founders and people with disability?
It's a good question. I think that, again, everyone is on a journey in this. And so, and we are learning as an organisation and as a division within an organisation as well. And so sometimes we won't get it all right, but certainly it is the place from which we're wanting to design and it's our aspiration that there is no power imbalance. In fact, it should be the other way around, that it is seen as I guess, a benefit and a skill and an experience that you are bringing to this space that should be applauded and lauded because it is, you are bringing a new experience of ways that products and services could be designed.
And how do you share that message with your founders who have not got first-hand or second-hand experience with disability?
So we try to make sure that we have people with disability actually speaking and talking in these sorts of ways as well. It's certainly part of the values of our team. So they're at the small Remarkable team. We talk about this a lot. We talk about how we can continue to grow and change as well as an organisation and learn. So I think that hopefully it comes through in both our communications, in the values in which we work by and also the specific programmatic elements that we add to what we do.
Mr. Horsley, Remarkable was founded in 2017, but as I understand it, it has not yet collected or produced any specific data, information or reports concerning the outcomes for participants? Can you tell me why you haven't undertaken this work?
So we see ourselves as an intermediary. So we measure ourselves on the work that we're doing with intermediaries. And so the intermediaries, the broader part of the ecosystem that we're dealing with are founders themselves. And so our work is to support those founders as they evaluate their business opportunities and try and grow their business. The next layer down, if you like, is the beneficiary of the products and services that they do create. We would love to be able to continue to measure, or we'd love to be able to measure that in a more formal way beyond just hearing kind of net promoter scores that are given by the startups talking to their customers. We'd love to be able to record that in a much greater way, but we just haven't had funding for that at this stage.
Have you got plans to do that in the future?
Absolutely. If we do have funding for it, we'd love to be able to do that.
And do you see a connection between the production or the collection of that data and the production of those reports to further increasing the profile of the programs?
Absolutely. And I think, probably should say as well, that it is a complex area around measuring impact. It is much more straightforward to measure impact around removing carbon from the atmosphere, for instance. When you were talking about a range of services or a range of technologies that might be impacting greater choice, it might be a quality of life outcome, it might be.
The measures will be different.
They will be different. And so there is complexity in there. And I don't think that there has been, from what we can see so far, there hasn't been lots of standardisation around social impact measures in that way. And we'd love to see some more development in that space.
And certainly the product, to the extent possible, the collection and reflection of those measures would be something of interest to the private sector.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Fraser, to plagiarise Ms. Eastman, I am conscious of time.
Thank you very much, Chair. I had just one final question.
Very good.
Your, um. Mr. Horsley, I wanted to just finish acknowledging your role within Remarkable as an organisation involved in accelerator and tech startups. I'd like to ask you what your vision for an inclusive Australia is.
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity as well. So when we see the role that technology plays in our lives, it's becoming more and more prevalent that we are dealing with technology in every aspect of our life. And ultimately, all technology is assistive technology. It helps us to do something. It is not a special category. And so I think my vision for a more inclusive Australia is that the Remarkable technology that we are helping to create isn't remarkable anymore. And that's not because of some kind of policy or it's not because of some kind of stick that is kind of given to organisations. It's because we have people with disability in the C-suite. We have people with disability who are guiding the product development of large organisations. I think also for too long, we've been subsidising the research and development of new services. People with disability have been subsidising that because they've had to. When a world is not created for them, they have to create solutions for themselves. And we should be seeing disability as synonymous with innovation. That's what I would hope to see, is that when we think about innovation, we actually think about people with disability are actually the best advocates for that because they've been doing it for a really, really long time. And probably the last thing I'd say is that I think that we actually have some of the policy settings here in Australia that lend itself to us actually leading this for the rest of the world. We have an opportunity here that we are creating a market where there is choice and control around technologies and products. But imagine if we could take that to the rest of the world and be leading that as well. So my vision for more inclusive Australia is that Australia leads the world in this.
Thank you, Mr. Horsley. Chair, if I could ask that Mr. Horsley's statement be tended into evidence and marked Exhibit thirty-one dash zero one four. The Remarkable Social Impact Review, March 2016 to August 2017, be marked Exhibit thirty-one dash zero one four point one. The Remarkable Evaluation Report, February 2019, be marked Exhibit number thirty-one dash zero one four point two. And finally, the Remarkable Evaluation Program, 2018 to 2020, be marked Exhibit number thirty-one dash zero one four point three.
Yes, thank you. Those documents will be admitted into evidence with the markings that Ms. Fraser has indicated. Mr. Horsley, thank you very much for your very interesting evidence about what Remarkable does and the opportunities that it has and the challenges it faces in realising those opportunities. It's been a very interesting session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, Ms. Eastman isn't here to dictate to us. How long are we going to take the lunch?
Chair, I can indicate that the intention is that we adjourn until two P M.
Okay, we shall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, I apologise for the delay. Entirely my fault. Yes, Ms. Eastman?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. We now turn to what I described at the opening of this public hearing as part, you're right, part three. And our attention is now focused on the Australia's Disability Strategy, twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one. As the Chair and Commissioners are aware, the strategy was launched on the third of December last year. And the strategy is described as a call for all Australians to ensure people with disability can participate as equal members of society. And it's said to be, at its heart, a commitment to create inclusive community. It's said that the strategy speaks to our national aspirations to enshrine and elevate the ideals of respect, inclusivity and equality. And that's why all Australian governments, the Australian Government, state, territory and local governments are committed to delivering its principles. The approach taken in the strategy is to outline a vision and purpose. And for the course of this week, we've been talking about the vision for an inclusive Australia. The ADS, if I can use the shorthand expression, says that the strategy's vision for an inclusive Australian society is one that ensures people with disability can fulfil their potential as equal members of the community. And it's said to be in line with Australia's commitments under the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And that the strategy will play an important role in protecting, promoting and realising the human rights And that the strategy will play an important role in protecting, promoting and realising the human rights of people with disability. The purpose of the strategy is to provide national leadership towards greater inclusion of people with disability. To guide activity across all areas of public policy, so they are inclusive and responsive to people with disability. To drive mainstream services and systems to improve outcomes for people with disability. To engage, inform and involve the whole community in achieving a more inclusive society. The approach taken in the A D S is to identify some outcome areas. And Commissioners, you have been told at previous public hearings that the identification of the priority areas, followed a process of consultation with people with disability. The key policy areas include the priority that people with disability should be safe, and feel safe from violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. The policies, processes and programmes provide better responses to people with disability who have experienced trauma. Policies, processes and programmes for people with disabilities should promote gender equality and prevent violence, against groups with heightened risk, including women and their children. So there's a range of areas in employment, financial security, inclusive homes, safety, rights and justice, personal and community support, education and learning, health and wellbeing, and an area that we have addressed during the course of this week, community attitudes. The way in which the A D S is intended to work is to then, uh examine further the way in which each of these priority areas will be acted on. And there's a number of features to this, which I'll explore with the witnesses this afternoon and into tomorrow. But one of the key features is the use of targeted action plans. Those targeted action plans have asked the Commonwealth and each of the states and territories, to identify their particular priority areas and initiatives. The strategy then calls for an evaluation and a tracking process as to how each of the priority areas, together with the targeted action plans, are given effect. You'll hear shortly from the representatives from Queensland that in addition to what is happening at a national level, some states and territories take their own pathway to develop specific plans at a local level, to give effect to the targeted action plans and their respective commitments to the A D S. In preparation for this hearing, the Royal Commission sought information from each of the states and territories. We asked each of the states and territory to give us an overview, of what steps have been taken to implement the A D S since December last year, to realise the vision in the strategy. We asked about the practical aspects of implementation, we asked about evaluation, we asked about the budget and commitment to fi- financing the A D S, we asked about accountability, and we also asked about the relationship between the A D S, and meeting Australia's obligations under the Convention of the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. Each of the jurisdictions very kindly are agreed to keep their answers short and succinct, and we've incorporated the answers for each jurisdiction in Part C of the tender bundle, and I'll tender those materials into evidence at the end of, the discussion we have with the Queensland uh witnesses this afternoon. Ideally, the Royal Commission may have wished to uh have the opportunity to hear directly from all of the states, and territories, but in the time available to us, at this time of the year, and given the scope of this hearing, we focus on Queensland and also the Australian Government. So the balance of the hearing will be focused on the A D S, and the issues that I've raised about realising the vision, and looking at these issues from the perspective of government, and hearing from the policymakers, the decision makers, who have the power and the responsibility to influence change. So Commissioners, with that, may I introduce our witnesses from Queensland? And we have Cathy Parton and Michelle Bullen. I think you're going to take your oaths and affirmations, so uh the Chair's associate will assist you.
First, thank you very much, uh Miss Bullen and Miss Parton, for coming to the Royal Commission this afternoon and for uh, the material that you have provided and also for the evidence you will give about Queensland's approach to the strategy. We're grateful for your assistance. If you would follow the instructions of my associate who is sitting in front of me, uh she will administer the oath or affirmation, as the case may be, to you.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give, will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, uh Miss Bullen and Miss Parton. I'll now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
So, Miss Parton, can I start with you? You are the Deputy Director General of Policy, Legislation and Programme Reform, in the Department of Seniors, Disability Services, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Partnerships.
Yes, that's right.
And I think the abbreviation for the department is very long, but it can't even be shorthand to describe. Is that right?
Correct.
Are you happy if I refer to it as the department? Okay, thank you. In terms of this role, this is a role you've held since March twenty nineteen?
Yes.
And um prior to that, you were the Deputy Director General, Strategy, Governance and Engagement, at the Department of Local Government Racing and Multicultural Affairs. I'm I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, yes.
And it looking um at your career, you've had a long and extensive career in the public sector in Queensland, is that right?
That's correct.
I won't take you all the way through to your early days. So uh I'll ask you in in a moment about your particular responsibilities, but am I right in understanding that with respect to Queensland's response to the Royal Commission's notice? And Commissioners, you'll have this in tender bundle C behind tab twenty-nine. Have you got a copy with you?
Yes, I do.
And you can speak to questions six and seven, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Miss Bullen, can I turn to you? You're the Executive Director, Disability and Seniors Programme, in the Department of Seniors, Disability Services, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Partnerships, is that right?
Yes.
And it and you've held this role for about a year, is that right?
That's correct.
And um prior to that, you've also had long experience in the public sector, but also roles, for example, in the Queensland Ombudsman and to undertake roles in relation to investigations, and a role with the Queensland Family and Child Commission, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Now, in terms of your uh contribution to the Queensland response, you can speak to questions one and five. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, during the course of my questions today, um I'm very happy for either of you to answer the questions. And it may be that some of my questions might cover both aspects uh of the areas. Uh can I start just with you, Miss Parton, to outline what your particular responsibilities are with respect to the A D S, or the Queensland Disability Plan?
Certainly, thank you. Um before I start, I'd just like to clarify my role in the department. Um the department underwent a change um during that time. So I started in twenty nineteen as Deputy Director General for the Department of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Partnerships. And um the department merged with uh Seniors and Disability Services, I think it was late twenty twenty. So, sorry, just to clarify.
So what's your role with respect to the A D S or the Queensland Disability?
Certainly, thank you. Um my role as Deputy Director General for Strategic Policy, Legislation and Programme Reform is across, all areas of the portfolio. So I there's a team in my area, that is responsible for a policy development and that contributed to the development of the A D S. Um and we are also involved in supporting our minister at the Disability Reform Ministers' Meetings, and in intergovernmental negotiations.
And uh a- am I right in understanding and I and I apologize if I've overlooked this, you haven't been in the hearing room during the course of this week?
No.
And have you followed the proceeding during the course of this week?
I haven't had an opportunity to view the hearings, but I have um kept an eye across the topics that have been um under discussion.
When you say across the topics, someone from the legal team has provided you with a summary or update?
Someone from my department who's just been doing a bit of a summary on what's been happening this week.
Okay. Uh have you read the transcript at all?
Uh not in full, no.
All right. Uh can I ask you, just in terms of your professional background, what if any, of your background has involved working directly with and about people with disability?
Um really, only since uh the department um merged in late twenty twenty, have I um worked directly with people with disability. Prior to that, I did do some work um, when I was with the Queensland Reconstruction Authority around communications in a disaster or emergency, um and worked with some advisory groups, but um only really in my current role.
And in your current role, have you had to undertake any particular training in relation to working with people with disability?
Um we have a part of our mandatory training for all of our department includes, uh it's an online training package. That's the only training that I have done.
And was the online training package delivered by somebody with lived experience of disability?
Um it was online, so I I'm not sure who developed it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Miss Bullen, can I ask you the same questions? What's your role either with the A D S or the Queensland Disability Plan?
So my um like, as you said before, my substantive role is Executive Director in the Disability Seniors Connect. Um at the moment, I'm Acting Deputy Director General of that programme area. We have quite a range of responsibilities um in respect of people with disability. Um I won't discuss the seniors aspect, but if you don't mind, I'll just refer to my notes um to give you a concise summary. Um we have responsibility for inclusion, which is about leading action across government, uh to support social and economic participation of people with disability. Um the key way that we do that is through the State Disability Plan. Um. We also administer some programmes and services, so we fund disability peak and representative bodies and advocacy bodies.
Ask you to slow slow down. I'm happy for you to read from your notes.
Yes.
But my colleagues here,
Absolutely.
need to keep up with you and I don't want them to
Absolutely.
lose what you're saying.
Thank you. Um so in terms of programmes and services, we fund disability advocacy and peak and representative bodies. And we monitor and maximise investment in the N D I S on behalf of the Queensland Government. And we also administer a suite of safeguards and regulatory services that help protect the rights of people with disability, and keep them safe in service environments.
And like, Miss Parton, you haven't been here during the course of the week, is that right?
No, I have not, no.
And have you followed the work of the Royal Commission this week?
I haven't had an opportunity to watch all of the hearings. I have um, I've seen some summaries of some of the evidence that's been given. I've read some of the transcript of yesterday's hearing, and I've seen some of the media reports on it.
And looking back at your career in the public sector, have you had the opportunity to work with or for people with disability?
Um I think throughout my career, I have worked directly with people with disability in various public service roles in different capacities. Um in my current role and in the time I've been in the department, I've had a much um closer opportunity to work with, directly with people with disability as colleagues, and also through my work in supporting um various forums, including, the Queensland Disability Advisory Council, which is a forum of people with lived experience of disability. Um and working closely with our peak and representative bodies who represent people with disability. Um and I do work closely, we have a number of colleagues in my area who are people with disability or lived experience.
And have you also had to undertake any training?
The same training, so we have some mandatory training. Um I've also participated, I guess, in a number of forums where, awareness raising and and things like that have been um at a focus.
Right. I just want to start with a bit of a snapshot of the situation in Queensland. So it's right, isn't it, that over nine hundred thousand people in Queensland live with disability?
That's that's the A B S estimate, yes.
And in terms of the distribution between men and women, it's roughly equal, but slightly more men or males, identifying as people with with who live with disability, is that right?
That's my understanding from that national data.
Uh over a hundred thousand Queenslanders with disability are N D I S participants, and they receive N D I S supports, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Five point four percent of N D I S participants in Queensland come from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Nine point six percent of N D I S participants identify as Aboriginal people or Torres Strait Islander people, you're aware of that?
Yes.
The prevalence of disability increases with age, and approximately forty-two point four percent of Queenslanders aged over sixty-five live with disability, is that right?
It's my understanding, yes.
Might need you to say yes rather than not.
Yes.
In looking at the forecast for N D I S participation into the future, there's an estimate that the N D I S participants in Queensland will grow to over eighteen thou- eighteen hundred, eighteen, sorry, a hundred and eighty thousand uh participants in Queensland in the next ten years.
Yes, that is my understanding.
So it's close to double in the next ten years, almost double the present number of N D I S participants.
Yes.
And eleven percent of Queenslanders with disability were born in non-English speaking countries.
That I I can't confirm, but yes, it sounds right, but I can't.
All right. So um can I ask to, both of you can speak to the information provided to the Royal Commission. Were you both involved in drafting this document and preparing the contents of this document?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I wasn't. I was on leave. I returned last week, so it was prepared by my, the substantive holder of this position that I'm in now.
And the document itself refers to a number of other policies and plans and information. And are you familiar with the documents that are referred to in the response?
Yes.
Yes.
And I think each of you have got a folder that you've brought with you. Uh is that, that's, I assume, not the folder that's the Royal Commission's tender bundle, but you've got your notes and, and material, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So can I take it that you are both familiar with Australia's Disability Strategy, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
And you're aware that the strategy identifies particular policy areas and policy priorities? I need you to just ask.
Yes, yes, yes.
And um when we uh look at the, I might say, architecture of the A D S, there are a number of elements to it. There are, there will be something called the A D S Guiding Principles, is that right? You're aware of that?
Yes.
And they're currently being developed, you understand that?
Yes.
And what role is Queensland playing in the development of the A D S Guiding Principles?
We are participating as part of working groups that um with other state and territory governments and with the Commonwealth Government.
That's telling me what, where you're doing it, but what are you actually doing in terms of developing the guiding principles? What's Queensland's role?
Um the Australian Government is probably leading that process and we are contributing and um we are engaging then with our, um Ministers' Council as needed to provide input into that process.
What sort of input are you providing into that process?
So most of the um process is being led by the Commonwealth. I just have to, let me refer to my notes and see if I have any details about what we're. I do know that we um we're participating as part of the uh working group with all of the other states and territories and the Commonwealth. Um I don't have any detail.
Okay, let me, what do you do with the working group?
Um. Sorry, I don't have the, I'm not the participant on the working group, so I don't have the detail.
Miss Bullen, are you involved?
I'm not on that particular working group, no.
Okay, one of the other uh pieces of the architecture is something called an outcomes framework and a data improvement plan, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Has Queensland had a role in the development of the outcomes framework?
That work, can I, sorry, do you mind?
No, as I said, either of you cannot do that.
That that work was actually done some time ago, largely before, well before both of us were in the roles that we're in now, and there were representatives of our department in those working groups, um in terms of their. and there were representatives of our department in those working groups, um, in terms of their, their day-to-day activities. I don't think either of us have that information.
Is that a mostly Commonwealth-led initiative?
The development of the whole strategy was led by the Commonwealth with, with participation from all the states and territories, as I understand.
And you've mentioned already another feature, which is the Disability Reform Ministerial Council. And I think, Miss Parton, you've said that you've got some responsibility in relation to working with, uh, ministers for that council. Can you tell us about Queensland's role?
Sorry, yes, we provide, um, so I provide support for Minister Crawford as a minister who attends those council meetings.
And, uh, how regularly are you involved in attending the council meetings? Is it something that you frequently attend or is it something that's happening on a quarterly or annual basis?
Yes, so under the, um, former Commonwealth Government, it used to be quarterly, but, um, since the change in government, those meetings are now happening monthly to six weekly. There was actually one on Tuesday this week, um, and most of those forums are in person and all the ministers met in Melbourne this week.
Now, another key feature of the way the A D S works is the development of targeted action plans. And you're aware, and I think their shorthand expression is T A Ps, so if you go with me on the jargon. There's currently five T A Ps, you're aware of that? A Community Attitudes Tap, Early Childhood, Employment, Safety and Emergency Management.
Yes.
Now, uh, I'm conscious of the time, so I'm not going to take you through all of the T A Ps, but I do want to focus on one. So Queensland has identified its priority areas for the five T A Ps to be fifty five actions in total across twelve departments, and you've given us that response, Commissioners in answer to question two B on the, uh, table. But I wanted to, um, ask you about Community Attitudes, which has been a focus of the hearing this week. Commissioners, in that tender bundle C, you will have a copy of the, uh, Community Attitudes Tap, and it's most inconveniently the last document in that folder, if you're using the hard copy. So the Community Attitudes Tap says that, uh, the tap, this tap should be linked to and include state and territory disability plans. So it speaks to that. And this tab, if you've got the document there, and if not, we can give you a copy, talks about the growing understanding of the rights of people with disability to fully participate in society and consultation on the developments of the strategy highlighted significant impacts community attitudes have on people with disability, specifically on their participation in the community, education and employment. So, uh, you, um, are aware that the purpose of this particular tap is to address what was perceived to be a problem with respect to community attitudes, is that right?
Yes.
Then, uh, this tab indicates that people with disability were involved. Their views were sought through a public submission process, a series of focus groups, workshops with the disability representative organisations and cross collaboration workshops with people with lived experience and sector representatives. With respect to that work, did Queensland have a direct and active role in that part of the development of this tap?
As in Queensland Government, uh, our department specifically. My understanding is we did have people participate in all of that work, um, but I can't absolutely confirm that because I wasn't part of that process, we could, we could certainly find that out for you.
Hmm, right. So it says that the key outcomes and objectives of this particular tap is designed to drive progress under the Community Attitudes Outcomes area of the strategy. And the Outcomes area aims to ensure that community attitudes are improved and enable people with disability to have full equality, inclusion and participation in society. And then there's a, a description about some aspects of meeting the key outcomes and objectives. If we look at the document, uh, it's then divided by, uh, each jurisdiction and each jurisdiction has particular action items. So if I can ask you to turn to page twelve.
I have, um, a summary of the Queensland actions, I don't have a copy of the actual document.
Thank you.
Sorry, was that page five?
Uh, if you go to page twelve.
Yes.
So these are the Queensland-specific actions. There's four objectives and thirteen actions, and they travel from page twelve pa- to page, uh, fifteen. Now, if I just take objective one, which is employers value the contribution of people with disability to make the workforce and recognise the benefits of employing people with disability, that objective is not identified by the Commonwealth, it's identified by Queensland, is that right? And do you know how that objective was identified by Queensland?
I don't have line of sight of how it was developed, I wasn't participating in those processes at that time. Um, but we did have representatives there, we would, we would be able to find that out for you, I just don't have it with me.
You don't have any personal knowledge of this?
How that particular objective was developed? It was done before I was in this role and so I don't have a, like, first-hand knowledge of how it was developed, no.
Well, there's one action item under objective one.
Mm-hmm.
Which is to give businesses the confidence to employ Queenslanders who have experienced a period of unemployment and help workers facing disadvantage in the labour market, including people with a disability through the participation in the Revitalised Back to Work Programme. And the timeline for this is late twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. So that's the action. So are we right in understanding that the Back to Work Programme is a programme that predated the development of these objectives and the development of the A D S?
Yes.
And are we right in understanding that the Back to Work Programme is not a programme specifically for people with disability?
No, that's correct.
And it would be, would we be right in understanding that the Back to Work Programme is essentially a little like a rehabilitation, that if somebody has had a workplace injury or a period of unemployment, that this is a programme to support people returning to work?
That's my understanding as well, but I would note our department doesn't administer that programme, so I probably can't go into too much detail around that.
But your department's got the overall responsibility for the A D S.
Yes, and for coordinating the input by other Queensland Government agencies, yeah.
So can you, can you help us at, about what's identified as the action and the objective? How does that go to the issue of community attitudes?
Um, I think, um, employment is one element, but, um, in terms of the development of the Queensland actions for the T A P, sorry, for the Targeted Action Plans.
Go with the T A P, we're happy with that.
Um, try not to use acronyms because we have way too many of them in our department. Um, the, the Targeted Action Plans only form just one part of Queensland's contribution to the A D S, so.
I accept that, um, but what I'm trying to do is be quite specific. We're focusing on, uh, a targeted action plan which has the objective of changing and improving community attitudes. So my question's fairly narrow.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, how does the objective one and the action item there meet that objective of improving community attitudes?
Um, I think the department that put that, um, programme forward, which is the Department of Employment, um, would have been on the basis that, um, the, an increase of people with disability in the workforce will increase, um, visibility and people's interactions with people with disability and therefore potentially have an impact on community attitudes.
So that's a bit of an assumption, isn't it, about what our Back to Work Programme might do?
Yes, it is.
It's not a specific targeted programme to community attitudes for people with disability, would you agree?
Yes, I would agree.
Right, the second objective is described as key professional workforces are able to confidently and positively respond to people with disability. Do you know who's responsible for even the description of objective two?
I don't.
What are key professional workforces?
My understanding of that is that workforces that include health, those clinical workforces, health, um, education, emergency services, those other professions that support people in the community.
And was this objective that those workforces need or should be able to confidently and positively respond to people with disability based on identifying some underlying problem? That key professional workforces were not able to do that? Is that the basis of this objective?
My understanding is that the basis of it is improving or increasing their level of knowledge, awareness and confidence. So it's not saying that they had, that there was an identified problem, it was just a recognition that there's, um, scope for improvement of, of, of everybody in the, working in the Queensland Government to improve their awareness and understanding.
But was there any assessment or identification as to whether there was any deficiency or any, uh, limitations on the key professional workforce with respect to responding to people with disabilities?
I'm not aware whether there was or not.
When you develop an objective like this, should you not be able to clearly identify what the problem is that you're seeking to respond to by the objective and actions?
Well, I rise to object that neither of these witnesses are the authors of this document. And with respect, it's unfair to effectively test them about the wording and definitions of them in the manner that's being undertaken.
Are being implemented or given effect to. Uh, and, uh, in that sense, I think that the witnesses should be able to address the question. So would you mind repeating the question, Miss Eastman?
Um, I don't have the transcript in front of me.
Well, when you develop an objective.
Like this, should you not be able to clearly identify what the problem is that you're seeking to respond to by the objective and the actions?
Hmm, um, I, I guess this goes to a little bit the development of the T A Ps, which was done, um, quite quickly after the A D S was released. And it was done prior to when we released our Queensland Disability Plan. So I guess that, that would go back to my previous response where, um, Queensland Government's implementation of the A D S is not just through the T A P actions, it's also through the Queensland Disability Plan, through the Human Rights Act and through a number of other actions as well.
I'm gonna get to all of those as well, I'm just on understanding how Queensland, which has the responsibility for doing this bit, identified its objectives and the action items. So I take it that neither of you are involved in the drafting of this, but you both are involved in different ways in implementing this, is this right? So you have responsibility in relation to seeing how these objectives are fulfilled, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and are we right to assume that in so doing, you've got to have an understanding of what these objectives are seeking to do, is that right?
Yes.
Looking at the action items, and again, I'm not going to take you through each one, I will be here till, yeah, next year. Uh, I just want to look at two point four, which says, the review of disability awareness training, which has got three capital letters there, so I assume that's actually something rather than a broad description. So this is a review of disability awareness training for the Queensland public sector to ensure the training content addresses the contemporary understanding of inclusion issues and promote across all agencies. And this is said to have started in January this year and will continue through to December next year. Uh, I know we're going to get to the specific plan, but what is the disability awareness training there?
So that is a training package that our department developed some time ago. Um, and with the, with the support of people with disability who helped inform that process. Um, it has been in place for a little while now, it's been available to the public service and we do track, um, uptake of that training. Um, and we recognise and we, um, as part of our work in developing the State Disability Plan, that that needs to be reviewed and updated and made sure that it needs, that it's refreshed.
When it's talking about, uh, contemporary understanding of inclusion issues, what does that mean?
It just means to make sure that we're getting current advice on the things, on the issues that are relevant and the things that we need to address in that training, and things may change over time. So it's just making sure that the content is still current and, and representing best practice.
So what are the contemporary understanding of inclusion issues for Queensland at this time?
What we do generally to inform that sort of work is, is seek advice through, well, we've got a number of opportunities to do that. We fund, um, peak bodies and an executive peak body to, to coordinate and provide advice to us if there is a new or emerging issue for people with disability. Um, we use our Ministerial Advisory Council for that purpose as well. Um, so that process is really just one of making sure that if there are new issues that we're not aware of or that haven't been raised with us previously, that we're building that into that process.
Objective three says increased representation for people with disability in leadership roles. And to give a context to Objective three, are we right in understanding that essentially this is to promote opportunities for people with disability to participate on Queensland Government Boards and improve representation of people with disability in leadership roles in the Queensland public sector? So in terms of the, uh, participation on Queensland boards, the, this timeline suggests that this would be completed by June next year. Uh, and are we right in understanding that how that's going to be done is through a process of the advertisements and recruitment processes?
So the way we promote opportunities where there are, um, government board positions available, we have a, have a circulation process where we distribute that information to our subscribers, to our e-newsletter. Um, and we also share that information through our networks, um, and ask our peak and representative bodies to share it with their members. Um, so that we're maximising, I guess, the, the level of awareness of those opportunities.
And then, uh, the representation of people in leadership roles in the Queensland public sector has a focus on achieving a target of eight percent of representation. Does that representation mean employment or what does it mean?
So the, there is an employment target for the whole of the public service, um, and that is the current rate. So that's across the public service, eight percent of people with disability.
This is eight percent at senior officer and senior executive service or equivalent levels, is that right? So is that the level that you both are or are we lower or higher?
Yes.
Yeah, we generally look at from the director level up as being, uh, a senior, um. Sorry, it's just leadership roles.
So the eight percent is not, is, uh, consistent with a, a target generally to achieve, uh, employment of people with disability in Queensland in public sector roles. That eight percent's been there for some time, hasn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
So this isn't going higher than the eight percent to say, well, maybe if looking at the numbers, you've got nine hundred thousand people with disability in Queensland, that you might want to strive for a higher target, is it?
So at the time when the work was done on these actions, that was the current target, that work is, is under review at the moment.
Right, then the objective four speaks directly to improving community attitudes, this is on page fourteen. And the action items are directed to improving communication for the most part. And then over the page, some, uh, other priority areas, say in transport, disability advocacy and also First Nations people with disability. So just looking at objective four, which is improving community attitudes, is, it, it suggested that there will be a guide or a toolkit developed in consultation with people with disability to include contemporary inclusive language use with a particular focus on approaching and structuring proactive conversations around identity and consultation processes which value individual identity. Can you help me in explaining what that means?
So the, the discourse, I guess, that we're, um, looking to address there is the issue about the language that people with disability prefer to use and prefer us to use. And we know that there isn't one single approach to that, there is different perspectives on that. So it's making sure that there's, um, information available. So it's making sure that there's um information available for government and non-government people through um the information we publish on our website, which helps to, um, I guess debunk some of the myths and, and there are, um, certain terms that we suggest people don't use and certain preferred terms. And again, that's one of those things that changes over time and so we do review that and keep that up to date.
Right. Looking uh a- as a whole, at the, just the community attitudes, action items and objectives, would you agree with me that there's nothing that ident- that identifies as an action item, the need to undertake some research and to collect data about the prevalence of negative community attitudes?
Yes, I'd agree.
And looking at these action items, there is a reference to First Nations people in uh action item four point six. But beyond that, the community attitudes objectives don't capture intersectional experiences and the impact of negative attitudes where people may live not only with disability but with other intersectional characteristics, be it from a culturally and linguistically diverse background.
Not specifically in the TAP, no.
And you know that almost fifty percent of people with disability in Queensland are women? There's nothing specific to address community attitudes to women with disability.
Not in that TAP, no.
And looking at the timelines and the indicators, are these timelines set by the Queensland Government or is this the nudge from the Commonwealth on these timelines?
I don't know.
I believe they're set by the government, so by the departments that put the actions forward, yes.
And when the TAP talks about indicators, are these intended to be the outcomes that the action items are seeking to achieve? Or are the indicators the tools by which you may evaluate whether the action items have been achieved? It just seems to be a mix here and I would appreciate your assistance in understanding what the Queensland indicators mean.
Some of them are expressed as outputs and deliverables and some of them are expressed more as outcomes, they're contributing overall to that outcome of, of improving community attitudes. So the outcomes framework under the ADS, I guess, is the.
All right. Now, we've only just looked at some of the community attitudes, but you're aware, aren't you, that part of the involvement with the TAPs is that each of the jurisdictions are picked up in the targeted action plans report, you're aware of that? And to date, there's been one report that's been published, commissioners, which is the targeted action plans report for three December twenty twenty one to thirty June twenty twenty two. And you'll find that behind tab twenty six in part C. Now, do you have a copy of this? Make sure you have a copy.
Thank you.
So to- turning to Queensland, uh if you start at page fifty six.
This is only the first little part, it doesn't, it only goes up to page thirty six.
I'll just make sure the commissioners have caught up with us as well. Take your time, there's no rush. Page fifty six. This uh report takes each of, and again, I'm just referring to community attitudes. So it takes each of the taps, identifies each jurisdiction, sets out the objective and the action item, picks up the timeline and indicators, and then you'll see there's the additional column of the status being status and progress. And uh there's an indication that, for example, the first one which we looked at, which was the Back to Work Programme, that it's described as being on track and a hundred and thirty two people with disability were supported into jobs through the Back to Work Programme, employer incentives, ninety two of which in regional Queensland. The initial information on the twelve month programme completion will be available in late twenty twenty two, early twenty twenty three. Right. Just using that as an example, so that is information that Queensland has provided to the Commonwealth for the purpose of this. Were you involved in uh providing this information, either of you, to the Commonwealth on the tracking process?
My team was involved in the coordination of this information from the departments responsible for those, some actions, yes.
Right, so, oh, am I right in understanding based on what you said earlier that this is not a programme that sits with your departments, I assume probably an employment department?
Correct, Department of Employment, Small Business and Training.
So your role on the coordination would be to obtain the information and the data, is that right in particular?
The departments, yes, we would have, um, I would assume, go out with a template for departments to complete and they come back with the information approved through, within their structure.
And then do you have a role in how this information may be uh reviewed, evaluated and then communicated to the Commonwealth? Or is it just a process of giving them the raw data that you receive?
Um, we would have gone back with the information provided by that department, we would have done a check to make sure that it made sense and that they had addressed the queries and gone back to them with any um questions about that, but ultimately it's the responsibility of that department to report on their action.
The, um, looking through the document, if you turn to page fifty eight, it looks like most things are on track, but the report up to thirty June this year for action item two point three, which is review and update training packages for custodial and community correction staff to enhance staff awareness on the complex needs and vulnerabilities of people with disability as described as having some delay, you see that? So that suggests that the training will be reviewed and be part of the disability strategic action plans. So again, would that be something that your department is involved in either collecting the information or driving the response? What's?
So we would have had that response, I think, um, from memory, that action was Queensland corrective services, um, and they would have advised us that they are delaying that pending the development of their own um disability service plan.
Then uh the other delay, if you turn to page sixty one, is in the advanced market opportunities for First Nations providers to deliver culturally appropriate services to Aboriginal and on Torres Strait Islander people living with disability. So looking at that um outcome, the delays indicate that there were there's been some work done in terms of people attending NDIS business development seminars, but then some seminars have had to be rescheduled.
Yes, that's correct, I can speak to that, that's my area of responsibility. So that programme, um, had, had a schedule of um these seminars being rolled out in the um discreet Indigenous communities and some of them. Um, and there were some occasions where we had scheduled visits and forums that we then had to cancel and reschedule. So at that point in time, yeah, those couple had been rescheduled.
And one item, which is four point three on page sixty, is identified as being completed. And does that mean that once the action item has been undertaken and completed, that's the end of it? There's not any ongoing work or progress attached to a completed item?
Uh, yes, that would be my understanding, but departments can put forward um new actions when we re- review the TAPs as well.
And has the department put any, forward any new action items following the the completion of that item, which is the tenant connect?
Um, not at this point in time, but with the release of the um Queensland Disability Plan, all departments are now developing their own um individual strategies.
So that, that process of identifying the uh objectives and actions for the TAP and then the progress report, is all of that information then used to bring the next level in, which is down at the Queensland level? So you're moving from a national into a Queensland level, is that right?
Yes.
And the approach taken in Queensland is to have a disability plan that operates across all government.
Mm-hmm.
And then within that, further plans called disability service plans, is that right?
Yes, could, would, would you like me to just describe that a little bit more in terms of the framework that we're?
I'm gonna start big.
Okay, yeah.
Bear with me and go down, so I just, there, it's, I don't want to miss out anything as we go along.
Yep.
But just as a general starting point, we're looking at a plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then under that general plan, a responsibility for what's called disability service plans, I'll get to each of them. So if, are we right in understanding that when the ADS was developed at that time, Queensland had a disability plan called All Abilities Queensland, Opportunities for All.
Yes.
That was a five years, five year plan covering the period twenty seventeen to twenty twenty two, is that right?
Yes.
If you've got a cop, if you need a copy of it, we have.
A copy. That was, actually it was a three year plan, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty.
Oh, to, only to twenty twenty.
Twenty, so that built on our previous plan, so it was one of a series of three year plans.
And that plan had uh five priority areas, communities for all, lifelong learning, employment, everyday services, leadership and participation, is that right?
Yes.
And this plan was intended to be a coordinated effort across Queensland Government together with partnerships with the Commonwealth under the former NDS, the National Disability Strategy, to uh support, impart Queensland's transition to the NDIS, is that right?
Yes.
So that earlier plan had a, a focus around supporting Queenslanders to become NDIS participants. And the perhaps tilt or the lean of that policy was ensuring that the government departments were ready with the transition and that a clear demarcation between the services that Queensland would continue to provide and the services that may be moved into the NDIS, that all of that, again, I'll use that word architecture if you bear with me with the jargon, but that architecture was in place. So that was really what was driving that plan. Are we, are we right?
Through that period of transition, yes, that was the plan, yep.
And uh the, that plan was the subject of a comprehensive report at the end of the life of that plan, is that right?
That's right, we released a final summary, final progress report that reported against all of the specific actions in that plan.
And that report is quite comprehensive to say that all of the items identified were successfully delivered and the learnings have informed the ongoing development of other plans, is that right?
Correct.
Now, in terms of the comprehensive report, was that a report that was undertaken by way of an independent review?
No, that was a, a process similar to reporting against these TAP actions where agencies provided their advice to us on how they had implemented each of their actions.
Was there?
We consolidated it into the final.
Was there any independent review or oversight to uh take perhaps a second look at what the departments might be reporting in?
As part of providing that report, I'm not aware of any, anything else that happened in terms of pulling that information together. Um, as part of developing the next state disability plan, we had the working group review the previous plan and the actions taken under it and provide advice which informed the next strategy. So that review happened, if you like, after the report.
Right, I don't need you to dive deeply into the report, but o- on a reading of that report, it's got a, a sense that it's very much about identifying what's been achieved, rather than the report taking an approach to say, here are the barriers, here's where we haven't been able to achieve and these are the reasons why. So it's not a report that really looks at the challenges, it's more a report that celebrates what has been achieved, is that right?
That, that's, that's correct and that's effectively the feedback we received in terms of the next stage of the process, that we needed to have more of a focus on outcomes and measuring outcomes.
Was there any part of the evaluation of the All Abilities Queensland that involved a very critical look at any barriers to achieving the, the plan?
It was, it was a couple of years ago now and I, I, I have to say I can't recall, I, I, I'm not aware of anything specifically along those lines.
Right. But the work done in that evaluation report, which seems to coincide with the development of the ADS and the targeted action plans, they have all informed the development of Queensland's disability plan twenty twenty two, twenty twenty seven. That's called Together, a Better Queensland, is that right?
Yes.
So if I call that Queensland Disability Plan, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Now, this is in, this plan is really in your department, so you own this in terms of the overall responsibility?
It's a whole of government plan, we coordinated the development of it. Um, all departments reviewed it and had input into it and it was approved at a government level, so it is, it's not our department's plan, it's a whole of government plan.
But in terms of, um, and we asked you this, is there a person or agency in government with the sole responsibility for this? And I think you've said, well, there's not one person, but your department's got the overall responsibility, is that right?
That's correct.
The plan was released on the thirtieth of November this year.
Yes.
So it's only really been in circulation for the past two weeks.
Yes.
The plan is available in a number of formats, easy read, braille on request, open dyslexic typeface and audio files. Why is the plan not available in Auslan?
Uh, if it's, uh, I, I have to confirm, but I, there is a plan, I'm not sure where it's at in the process, it may not have been finalised yet, but we had we released the plan only a couple of weeks ago and we're finalising um those formats, but I'm reasonably certain, um, but I would have to probably confirm that for you, that we are um in the process of preparing.
If you take it that we have checked the website as at this.
Today and it's not there.
And it's not there. Um, but there's no ind- there's an indication that there may be a summary plan coming, but nothing to indicate that the plan will be available in Auslan.
Okay, I'll take that feedback.
Was it an intention not to have the plan in Auslan?
No, it was an intent, no, no intention.
When and how was the plan released?
I was on leave, um, when the plan was released. I understand it was rela- launched by the minister, it was released on our website and there was a ministerial statement at the time, it was released during Disability Action Week.
Has the plan been distributed to all public hospitals in Queensland?
It's certainly been distributed through government departments. Um, I'd have to check whether Queensland Health have distributed it to, to public hospitals, I'm not aware whether they have. We haven't sent it directly to them.
What about all schools?
Same, I don't know if the Department of Education has sent it to all schools, but um we can certainly find out.
What about police?
Don't know.
Courts and tribunals?
Don't know.
Any to disability service providers who operate as NDIS registered or unregistered providers in Queensland? Do you know if the plan's been provided to service providers?
So we, um, as I mentioned before, we have what we call an e-newsletter that we send out to our distribution list of around six thousand people, individuals and service providers, and a number of them are NDIS service providers. We also fund um a number of peak and representative bodies and we certainly ask them to distribute it through their networks. One of those um funded entities is National Disability Services, the Queensland branch. And we ask them to share it through their uh membership as well. But we didn't personally send it to every NDIS service provider, we, we, we wouldn't be able to do that, we don't have access to, the, the details of every NDIS service provider is, is maintained by the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission.
Right. So a key part of this new plan was collaborating with people with disability to reflect on the implementation of the previous All Abilities Queensland plan. So that work was led by Queenslanders uh as part of the Disability Network, is that right?
The organisation is called Queenslanders with Disability Network.
And uh how, how did that collaboration occur? I don't know if you were here earlier today when we um heard some evidence about co-design, collaboration, consultation and these words having different meanings. So
Yes.
What does collaboration mean and what was involved in collaboration?
So in this process, we um engaged QDN, Queenslanders with Disability Network, on our behalf to coordinate a working group of people with, with disability and lived experience of disability.
How many were on the working group?
That number I don't have in front of me. Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you the exact number. Um, they ran a series of workshops, so the, as I said, facilitated by QDN, where they went through and reviewed the previous. where they went through and reviewed the previous plan um and looked at also a, a series or a selection of departmental disability service plans. Um not all departments, but those were, um they chose a number of plans and reviewed those um and provided us with um several versions of, of several reports based on different aspects of their review. Um and then made suggestions, I guess, in terms of how they, this plan should be structured and some of the content of it came directly from that working group.
So that, do they also have a, a role in co-design of the current plan?
That's, that's what we refer to it as co-design. I take the point that there are different levels of co-design and collaboration. We refer to our process for developing this plan as co-design. We generally, um it was generally driven by the views of those people on that working party. Um that process, we, during that process and during the time we were developing this plan, we had um a, a Queensland Disability Advisory Council, a ministerial advisory council that finished its term this year and a new council has since been appointed. And both of those entities also um re- you know, were involved and reviewed and provided advice on it. Um so yeah, there was, there was a number of mechanisms I guess used to finalise the plan.
Were there particular co-design principles that were used?
So let me just refer, if you don't mind, to the document. The um Queensland, as I said, with Disability Network facilitated that process. Um that is one, as one of our, as our funded executive peak body, um they are developing resources for us and for the sector on co-design principles. I wasn't at those workshops at that time, so I can't say whether they um managed that process using those principles that they've developed or some other principles, but um we're certainly guided by them in terms of the process.
Would I be right in making this assumption?
Mm-hmm.
That when you're talking about co-design in the plan, this is all at the stage of reviewing the form plan and identifying what might need to either be priority areas or content for the current plan. And there were the workshops and consultation process at that stage. But the co-design process did not continue on so that the Queenslanders with Disability Network had a role in actually determining what the action items might be or the content or direction of the plan. So they didn't have a decision-making role, did they?
Uh well, no, not a formal decision-making role because it's a Queensland government plan. It was approved by government, but they certainly guided and there's certainly the content is what came through those workshops. The, this work was being done um at the time when the Australia's Disability Strategy was being finalised and hadn't been released. And um a number of the members on our working groups were also involved in those national processes, so had um visibility over the work that was being done nationally. Um and they also, so they, and they also had the benefit of, of understanding the outcomes framework that was being developed, so the advice that um led to the way we developed this plan came from that group. This plan itself doesn't include actions. This is, if you like, this is a strategy document. We called it the State Disability Plan to differentiate it from the national strategy. But the actions happen um at the next layer down, which is departmental disability service plans.
But essentially, in terms of the decision-making as to the final sign-off content of the strategy or plan, that's government's? It wasn't the network. Is that right?
The final sign-off is definitely government. Things like the name of the plan, the um by that time the working groups had been disbanded, but the Queensland Disability Advisory Council workshopped and came up with the name of the plan. It was a, a name that resonated for them. So there were aspects of it that they absolutely um made the decisions on and government accepted those decisions. So the, but the final approval of the document before release was government, yeah.
But they didn't have a decision, for example, as to what budgetary allocation might be made to funding the plan?
No, there's no funding allocated specifically to this plan.
I would have come to that in a moment.
Okay.
So uh we, the, the plan opens with a reference to the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, saying it provides the framework to promote and protect the human rights of people with disability. Australia has adopted the C R P D and that's been implemented through the A D S. So that's sort of how the strategy or the plan opens. We uh asked you in the questions whether Queensland has a body appointed within uh the Queensland Government to be a designated C R P D focal point for the implementation or the coordination with the Commonwealth on the C R P D. So that's question seven A and seven B.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're right, aren't we, to understand that there is no standalone Queensland body appointed uh as the designated C R P D focal point. And there is no standalone body or person with a role responsible for C R P D implementation, including coordination with the Commonwealth. So the process in Queensland is to have a, across departments and to have an intergovernmental arrangement that together creates the group that then internally liaises with the Commonwealth when it comes to C R P D implementation. Is that right?
That, that's correct.
Seven A and seven B.
Sorry, would, would you mind just repeating the part about the group?
There's no standalone person, body, agency, department in Queensland that says I or we have responsibility for C R P D implementation in Queensland?
That's correct.
Or a standalone agency, body or person to be that direct conduit with the Commonwealth on C R P D implementation, where Queensland and the Commonwealth need to work together. So there's no one person or one entity.
No, there isn't. The Commonwealth is the designated party and if they were raising an issue with the state, it would most likely come through our department. But you're correct, it may go to another agency depending on what it was in relation to.
You've, you've told us that in Queensland, it's a combination of your department, the Department of Justice and the Attorney General, the Department of Premier and Cabinet, and collectively implementing the responsibilities to give effect to the C R P D in Queensland. Is that right?
Correct.
So uh looking at how the C R P D translates into Queensland policies and practices, how do you connect the C R P D into the policies in the framework that you have in place?
So in terms of, I just want to make sure I understand. So in terms of um actions at that action level, that's, that's where the disability service plan, so the responsibility for implementing those actions sits with each government department that has to have a disability service plan. And so the coordination of it is through our department, but developing those individual departments' plans is done by and is the responsibility of those departments.
But if this plan starts with, in effect, the purpose of this is to give effect and to better protect the rights of persons with disabilities in Queensland.
Yeah.
Surely there's got to be some way of looking very carefully at the content of the C R P D and working out how does it filter down or translate at each level of government? Isn't that not a necessary step?
The C R P D scope is of course very broad and so it covers actions across like education, employment. So um there are responsibilities that sit with each department. It's, it's not um a single focus point.
But I, I don't know if the two of you are familiar with the C R P D, whether you tuck it under your pillows at night or what you do.
No, don't, don't sleep on it, no.
But if, if you are familiar with the C R P D, it contains a lot of rights, a number of guiding principles.
Yeah.
And it's a document that requires an understanding about how each element of the C R P D works with each other to give effect to the relevant rights.
Hmm.
Translating that into a local setting such as Queensland does require, does it not, an identification of which rights might connect with which department, which rights might connect with which policies, and then understanding that exercise of translating that. Do you agree with that? So who does that in Queensland?
In terms of reporting through to the Commonwealth, um our central agencies, so the Department of the Premier and Cabinet would have responsibility for going out to all the departments and reporting back on their delivery of the C R P D as the central coordinating agency there.
Is that, is there a uh strategy or framework for how that's done within Queensland? How you collect the information? How you analyse, how you evaluate tracking with the C R P D?
Not that I'm aware of.
Why not?
Um uh because our department wouldn't be the lead for that, so there may be, but it would sit within another department. And there's also Department of Justice and Attorney General through its role with, as um key administration agency for the Human Rights Act, because a, a lot of those um elements are also included in Queensland's Human Rights Act.
So what can you tell me then about something called the Disability Reform and Implementation Interdepartmental Committee? That's chaired by the D G of your department
Yes.
and comprised of senior representatives from all Queensland government departments. What does that do?
So that committee was set up as part of our implementation around the N D I S. Um and our Director General leads that committee and yes, there are um fairly senior uh officers from a number of departments. And so that's how we coordinated the reform and implementation of the N D I S. And we also um used that forum for resolving any significant issues at senior levels around across government.
Are there people with disability uh on or included as part of the interdepartmental committee?
Yes. Yes.
As decision-makers?
It's not a decision-making body. It's an advisory body. Um so, well, actually I don't have the terms of reference in front of me, but there are, uh it, there are some decisions within its scope, but there is, it's also a mechanism for escalating issues. So if issues, for instance, relate to our interaction with the N D I A, there's a mechanism for um discussing those issues at that level and then escalating it through the national governance forums.
Does that committee have to have oversight of the separate disability service plans?
Yes.
So is this a process, is this a committee that collects and collects information?
Yes.
And how practically does that work? Is this something that requires weekly, monthly meetings or is there a, a streamlined process of collecting the information?
So that committee meets um quarterly at the moment, um actually by a month, no quarterly, sorry, I'm mixing my committees. Um but over the last, as we've been developing the state plan and before it was released, we've been, it's been a standing item on the agenda to talk in terms of progress of agencies working through their review of their disability service plans in anticipation of release of the strategy. That group um has also, members of that group have also um recently presented progress reports on the development of their plans to the Ministerial Advisory Council. Um and the mechanism by which we'll be gathering information on progress of implementation on those plans is through that forum.
I, I would.
It's just early days, so we haven't.
I'm gonna give you an opportunity for afternoon tea and everybody else, but I'll just do one question before we do that.
Sure.
And just to square off these disability service plans. So you've told us in the response that this is legislated. In section two hundred and twenty one of the Disability Services Act says the chief executive of a department must develop and implement disability service plans for the chief executive's department. And then there's some timing in the plans, but essentially they are every three years. And the purpose of the plan is to ensure each department has regard to the following, to the extent they reasonably apply to the department's operations. The human rights principle, service delivery principles, government policies for people with disability. And if we look at the, what human rights principles mean, which is section seventeen and section eighteen of the Act, is that there's a range of descriptions about the outcomes of human rights, but no express reference to the C R P D. You're aware of that?
Yes.
And with respect to the role of the chief executive in developing the plans, there's nothing in statutory framework that requires any consultation, co-design or co-production of the plans. You're aware of that?
Um the, so section two twenty one four C talks about the government's policies for people with disability. And this is our current policy, whole of government policy for people with disability. And while it doesn't statutorily mandate um co-design, there's certainly the four um building blocks of developing both disability service plans and any actions that flow under them. Um it's certainly strongly encouraged through this document that agencies adopt that co-design process. So the way that it is implemented is through um the, the principles in the state disability.
But it'd be easier just to have it expressly in the legislation, wouldn't it?
Uh I, I, I guess I don't really have an opinion on that. I think um we've worked on the basis that we've put it into the state plan rather than, you know, having it in legislation, but I don't have a view on whether it would be easier.
And while it's mandated in the legislation, there's no sanction if the chief executive fails to comply?
Uh there's no penalty in here, no.
Right. Um Commissioners, I'm just mindful of the time. We're almost three thirty. We can have a break for ten minutes?
Ten minutes? All right, it's, well, it's now three twenty seven. Um I suggest we resume at three forty. Is that all right?
Thank you.
And is now adjourned?
Yes, Mrs. East.
Thank you. Just a few small uh follow-up questions from where we left before afternoon tea on the chief executives' disability plans. Does your department have a role in approving those plans?
Not a formal approval role. It is individual chief executive's responsibility, but the Act does outline consultation processes.
With your department?
Yes, yeah.
And what about um monitoring compliance with the plan? Does your department have that role or responsibility?
Not monitoring compliance. Um we coordinate reporting, whole of government reporting. Uh but compliance is a matter for individual chief executives.
A- and in terms of reporting to progress on the plan, uh does your department do that work or are the chief executives required to do that?
They'll provide us with information about their individual actions that they've um taken in their own plans. We'll consolidate that into a report. And we've committed um to then having the Queensland Disability Advisory Council review that report and provide, will provide um based on the advice from that council, a whole of government report.
And are those plans public?
They, yes, so departments publish them on their website. So at the moment, um they have their, they're in different stages, so there isn't a one start date and end date. So the agencies review their plans every three years. Most of them are in the process of, of finalising or developing their plans now that the state plan has been released. Um they've all got plans from prior years that are still um on their website.
And uh have all the chief executives had to have training with respect to disability and all the C R P D?
I can't speak to other departments and whether they've had some training in the past, I don't know. I'm not aware of any.
And uh in terms of, I think your earlier answer that if you follow through the section in the Act, which makes a reference to government policy on disability and that's where you'd find an obligation to consult or to co-design. Uh other than that, there's no requirement is there for the chief executives to have any engagement with people with disability at all?
No statutory requirement, but many of the departments have, I'm aware, um their own disability advisory councils or forums. They have and they are currently um co-designing their disability service plans and some of them are um engaging, for instance, Queenslanders with Disability Network to facilitate that work for them. And others are doing it with other, through other forums. But there's no statutory requirement for them to do that.
And you've said earlier that the Queensland Disability Plan is more like a strategy and you've said there's not a lot of content in that, but you expect that detail to be in the chief executive uh executives for each of the department's plans.
Plans, yes. That's where the actions are identified and um track, you know, progress is tracked against those individual plans.
All right. So I just want to put a series of propositions to you, uh and you can either. Uh, and you can either assist me by uh telling me where this might be in the Queensland Disability Plan, or we would expect to see this in a chief executive's plan. Looking at the Queensland Disability Plan, there's no reference to the concepts of universal design or inclusive design as being a key principle in the way in which disability planning and policy development occurs in Queensland. Would you agree with that?
Uh, so other, there's reference on the bottom of page twenty-three under the um heading Human Rights. So these are the four building blocks that the working party told us were critical in the way that, that this plan was developed, in the way that agency disability service plans are developed. And in the way that agencies conduct their business um and develop new initiatives or policies or practices. So under the heading of Human Rights, the last stop point on that page says, we consider universal design to be an important part of a strong human rights approach. And then we outline what some, what we say universal design means.
But in terms of it being mandated as part of the process of developing policies, it's not there as a mandatory requirement.
Not a statutory requirement, no.
In terms of the way in which the uh design of this plan operates and anything in the chief executive's plans, there's nothing to indicate that the approach must be one that embeds supportive decision-making in preference to substitute decision-making. Would you agree with that?
Uh, not in this plan, no.
And in terms of uh an emphasis on ensuring that housing premises and public places are accessible to people with disability, it doesn't identify that as a key priority area that all the Queensland departments have to work to. Would you agree with that?
So again, how, um.
In terms of accessibility, particularly for accessible housing, uh workplaces or public places.
Yeah.
Accessibility is not a mandatory element of the way in which the plan operates or the content for the chief executive's plans. Do you agree with that?
Again, it's not a statutory requirement, but the um, starting on page twenty-five, the impact areas, again, this was the feedback that the working group gave us, um, to, to make that cultural, that long-term cultural and systems change that people with disability want to see as a result of this. Their advice was that every department needs to look in developing their disability service plans and any other actions that they develop. They need to look at their four impact areas across their business, so they need to consider their service users, their people, their community and their places. And, and we've described under our places what we mean by that. Um, but it does talk about physical places as well as online places where our services are delivered, um. And making sure that infrastructure is accessible, inclusive and universally designed. So that's, again, not a mandatory statutory requirement, it's something that we've been um engaging with departments over the la, you know, over the life of the development of this and making sure that they're aware that that's an expectation, I guess, of this plan, rather than a statutory requirement.
There, there's nothing in the plan that speaks to the experience of segregation and segregated settings. And there's nothing in the plan that requires the dismantling of segregated settings, is there?
Not in that language or terminology, no.
And uh in the absence of having a clear priority area of moving from segregated settings, are we right in understanding that this plan assumes that there will be ongoing segregated settings, be it in housing, in schools, in justice systems?
The plan is silent on that, but the um, the contents of the plan, I guess what we heard loud and clear from the working party was that the priority areas under the Australia Disability Strategy are the, are the right areas for us to be focusing on. This plan, uh, and the design of it was to make sure that we've drawn out the things that um that working group predominantly told us were the most important things, and these are those four building blocks. So that language around segregation um wasn't part of that discussion and that input that we received, so um, I wasn't at all of those forums, but I, my take on it is that then it wasn't something that was a burning issue for that group to see reflected in this plan, that the Australia Disability Strategy and the other um structures that we have in place in Queensland to implement the, the convention, including things like the Anti-Discrimination Act and the Human Rights Act already exist, so while we've referenced and we haven't repeated um necessarily all of that, so.
So one, one thing about segregated settings and particularly if they're closed settings is that it's difficult in some cases to get access to people in those settings. And was the process of the consultation and co-design one where people who live, work, or go to school or have the experience of uh segregation, part of that consultation? Do you know that?
I don't have the list of um attendees in those working groups in front of me, it was, it was some time ago and we've had a number of other forums and co-design forums, so I, um I can't differentiate now in terms of over the last couple of years which forums, who have attended what forum. Um, we, certainly those working groups, though, we didn't um take them into those types of settings to do that work, it was done with people either online or face-to-face. It was also done, unfortunately, we had Covid which had a, a big impact on our ability to bring people together at that time, but um.
Did you hear the evidence this morning or have you been told about Dr. Ammon's evidence this morning about what she called as edge u, edge users?
I didn't hear it and I haven't read that in the summary.
Uh, looking at the overall plan, uh, there's nothing that says Queensland needs to look to the future by transitioning away from environments that exclude people with disability or maintain segregation. You agree with that? Doesn't speak to a transition plan. Why's that?
It wasn't something that came out through that feedback that we received as being of critical importance. I wasn't, as I said, in all those forums, it may have been discussed. Um, it wasn't in terms of the final input from that working group, something that came um to the fore and needed to be documented in the plan, noting that um agencies responsible for those environments will be, will be considering that as part of their disability service plan development.
Uh, assume that it might not have come from the people who were part of that consultation. But these are principles that might be relevant to giving effect to the C R P D. It remains government's responsibility, does it not, to identify the areas where the plan should be addressing meeting the C R P D obligations and also looking at improving the lives of people with disability? So you don't need the, the network to tell you whether it should be in or out?
No, but what we need, what we wanted this document to do was to be owned and um delivered and the people with disability who had input into it to feel that it reflected what they told us. Noting that Queensland had already signed up to Australia's Disability Strategy and, and Australia's signed up to the convention. That wasn't, I guess, in terms of us needing to document that, we didn't, um, we certainly didn't hear that from them and we didn't, um.
But you're not suggesting.
To, but.
You're not suggesting that the absence of dealing with segregation and transition away from segregation is because the disability networks didn't tell you about it, is that right?
I'm just saying that this, this plan was not intending to cover the field, I guess, in terms of existing or, or including things that are covered elsewhere, um, but you know, we wanted this plan to be driven by um the people who are intended to benefit from it.
And accepting that the elimination of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is in the justice priority area in the A D S. There is nothing specific in this plan that identifies the elimination of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation as a priority area that takes into account the intersectional experiences of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation?
Not, it's not drawn out as a specific, it's the, the intent of the plan is to um effectively adopt those priority areas under the A D S, so it's not. We do, we do list them, um, and the right safety and justice, it's definitely um included there as reference, but we didn't, um we didn't reinvent the wheel we relied on, the work that was done in forming Australia's Disability Strategy.
All right, so Commissioner Mason uh may wish to know about the role of First Nations communities and organisations with respect to identifying the key action areas for First Nations people with disability in Queensland. You've spoken about working groups and consultation. How did the First Nations' perspective, voice and culture inform the way in which the plan was developed? And if I haven't got that question right, I'm sure Commissioner Mason will assist me.
Thank you. Um, I guess the starting point is our department is the Department of Senior Disability Services and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island Department partnerships, so um colleagues, uh, our colleagues across our own department um certainly had an opportunity and gave us feedback um through that process. The actual membership of the working group, I can't recall the exact members who attended those um, those forums. We certainly have representation um in other forums, including we, we now fund a, a disability pe, a disability advocacy body specifically for First Nations people, so.
Can I just ask you to slow down a little bit, thanks?
We didn't have that in place at the time that this was developed, um, so I couldn't tell you exactly who was involved in developing this. Um, certainly it was, went through our department's processes and was endorsed by our Director General.
And with respect to looking at that intersectional aspect and given the relatively large number of Queenslanders with disability who don't speak English as first language or identify as call communities. How uh does this plan address their interests? I couldn't see, for example, a commitment to interpreters to be available for people whose uh first language may not be English.
It may not be, I can't recall whether it's specifically spelt out in here, um, certainly on our website, we have um information about um the different languages interpreter services that we provide um for people you know, to communicate with our department and there's whole of government policies on that. I would have to reread it to confirm that we didn't include anything about that, but um I'm happy to take your, your word for that.
Want to move to budget allocation. I think you mentioned earlier before the break that there's no specific budget allocation in Queensland as a sort of budget line item for the A D S or the Disability Plan. But in your response to the Royal Commission at question four A, you did identify that the department has uh two hundred and three million dollars allocated towards the delivery of disability and inclusion services in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. In addition to Queensland's contribution to the N D I S. So that, that response that you provided to us in answer to question four A
Yes.
uh, is to say, this is what our budget is overall, but we don't have a particular line item budget allocation for the A D S, is that right?
Yes, yeah, well, and I think that's because of all that the responsibilities are, um with so many different departments, so there would be budget line items within each department's um budget.
It's not a budget line item for C R P D implementation in Queensland?
Not in my cost centre, no.
There's not a, a specific budget allocation with respect to each of the targeted action plans under the A D S? That I could see in your response.
Sorry, not, um, the ones that our department are responsible for are either things that we will do within our existence, so there's not a, a called out standout line item. Um, sorry, but the, um, but other agencies, I can't speak to how they, how they structure their budget.
When the chief executives are preparing a departmental uh action plan under the Disability Services Act, does that work in preparing the action plan line up with a specific budget allocation to the department to give effect to, for example, the human rights principle in, in the, the department's uh action plan?
In our department's action?
In any of the departments, any of the chief executives who have to prepare plans.
Not that I'm aware. It would be um up to each department as to how they report their, their budget and how those line items are aligned.
Right, I understand from reading the material that there's also a role for local councils to have a role in the A D S. But they don't come into the particular uh targeted action plans. Where do local councils fit in in terms of your department's responsibility? Do you have a role of monitoring where the local councils develop any uh action plans? Take any particular uh initiatives? Do any training? What's, where's the eyes on the local council?
So the Disability Service Act doesn't mandate disability plans for local government, um, it is only for the Queensland Government Departments. A, the um Local Government Association of Australia, as I understand, sign, uh, uh, there's a signatory to A D S. Um, but the local government, um, local government act in Queensland governs the requirements and obligations on local governments. We certainly encourage, and this document um is a call to action and it does specifically refer to the role of local government um in implementing, if not a disability service plan as we describe it, a plan, um, and, and many do, there are some um really good examples in, in local governments of plans that they've developed. But it's not a statutory requirement under, under the state government for them to do that.
So where is there any uh either incentive or sanction for local councils to join in to give effect to the A D S?
The incentive, I suppose, is to um represent their communities and their obligation to provide um inclusive and um accessible services to their the constituents and the rate payers, and I guess their ultimate sanction is if they don't do that. They might not be on the council, I guess, in the longer term, but the, the sanction and the um responsibility sits with local government.
Is there any guidance from your department for how local councils may?
So we've provided, we provided all state government departments with templates and guidelines on how to develop their G S Ps and processes to use. We've made that available more broadly on our website to anyone who wishes to use it. Um, we've had some inel, some initial discussions with the Local Government Association of Queensland around um communicating that information to them and um things like using their newsletters and things to distribute information. Obviously, this plan's only been released a short time, so we haven't done any of that for this plan as yet, but there's certainly um scope for us to do that.
What about up to the private sector or sort of quasi-government private sector partnerships? So the plan as we read it is a very government-focused approach. But surely to give effect to the objectives that are in the T A P S and the way in which Queensland delivers services, there has to be some engagement, does there not, with statutory corporations, quasi-government private partnerships, but also to the private sector. Where do they fit into this plan?
So the intent of it is it's not just a government-focused document, it is intended to um, as I said before, be a call to action to industry business. We know that government can't deliver um disability inclusion alone. It is gonna be um something that requires collective action and it's, we also understand and we um discuss in here the it's a, it's an iterative process of change. We know that there's a way to go and that there's a role for, for everyone basically to play in achieving that. Um, in a, in a Queensland government sense, um government departments, so statutory authorities and, and G O Cs fall under the portfolio responsibilities of one or more government ministers, so there is a mechanism um within those structures for them to require that. But in terms of the private sector, um, we do that through, and I guess encouraging them to um to be, you know, to, to take these principles and develop their own strategies and plans.
Is there any procurement practice or policy for any private sector organisations seeking either to consult, provide services or goods to Queensland that requires a private sector agency to have a disability action plan? Or to meet particularly indicators that you might see? I think, we asked you that question in the material, but we haven't, I haven't been able to find anything that indicates that there's some procurement programme that could be an incentive to the private sector engaging with government to meet some indicators that reflect the A D S or reflect the broader objectives that you've got in the new plan?
So the Queensland Government does have a social procurement mandate, which um encourages service providers to um or, or requires them to demonstrate social outcomes, but I don't know. Again, it's not delivered by our department, but I don't think it's as specific as you're saying in terms of requiring them to have a disability service plan.
Do you think that's a gap in terms of uh Queensland Government being able to fully participate in the A D S and meet those objectives of the A D S?
It could be, I'd have to look at what, what is in the um, the social procurement um, the existing materials, but it would be for that department, yep, could be.
Right, I want to turn to evaluation. So we've spent a lot of time on the development of the plan and the content of the plan. We asked you about evaluation of Queensland's performance. We asked you about evaluation of Queensland's performance against the ADS. We may have touched on that with respect to the TAPS in the the action report. But the uh the commitment Queensland says it makes is that we set clear targets and we measure if we reach them. Measuring outcomes and impacts recognises that collecting, maintaining. And reporting accurate and accessible information is essential to formulating and implementing best practice policies. Programs, actions and making adjustments where needed. Our approach to measuring outcomes and impact is embedded in the principles and the articles of the CRPD. Particularly in relation to statistics and data collection. This emphasis that the right data is collected, ensuring respect for the privacy of people with disability. And follows ethical principles to identify and address the barriers faced by people with disability in exercising their rights. So that's a commitment. How is that done in practice? Is there a strategy that specifically deals with targets? Measurements and data collection?
There's a couple of aspects to it, so specifically reporting outcomes under this plan is done through departmental disability service plans. And it's up to departments to develop their targets and their indicators of their performance. In terms of um more broadly, the outcomes framework under Australia's Disability Strategy, that. The outcomes that we're wanting to achieve are those same outcomes, so we'll we'll be leveraging and also contributing to reporting against that framework. Um, at a Queensland level, um, we've also developed some, um, we're in the process of developing some. Outcomes frameworks ourselves around the NDIS to augment um the nationally available information.
Only the NDIS, not more broadly?
And we're also um participating in the National Disability Data Asset, which. Was no longer referred to as a pilot, but that project that is still on foot, we're still actively involved in that.
Are there any challenges in participating in that to have a nationally consistent approach? To disability flags or the collection of disability data that brings a consistent approach across the country?
Yes, there are challenges, um but uh uh it was discussed at the most recent Disability Reform Ministers' Meeting. And there seemed to be a high level of commitment in the room to that. I think there will be a communique released in relation to that, but um. It it seems that there is a high level of commitment, so I'm sure we'll be able to resolve those issues.
And is there any formal uh data sharing between Queensland and the Commonwealth around the data that you collect? We've re-. Referred to a few quite small pieces of data in the uh progress report for the first six months. So there seems to be data in different locations. Is there any data sharing arrangements presently between. Queensland and the Commonwealth on those sorts of matters?
We're certainly in the final stages of um finalising a data sharing agreement with the NDIA. Between the whole of Queensland Government and the NDIA, so that should be of assistance.
If um you're setting targets and measuring to reach them, uh what's the transparency in that? Is it, this is, is this uh information that will be. Prepared in a report and made public, and if so, when and how will that occur?
So the individual departments will release their plans, which will have their target, their indicators and their timelines and things um in that document. And we'll be collecting information from them um as part of the annual report under under this plan to consolidate all of that information. Um, and the intention is that there will be a public report.
And in terms of taking the disability-specific policies. To what extent are those policies taken and reviewed with respect to general policy? Say, if you've got. A policy generally around transport.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is it that that policy meets the sort of core group? I think Doctor Amin described it this morning as sort of on a bell curve or a scatter of the majority. Or is it that you're looking to bring the disability policy into the mainstream settings? Have we got an approach on integrating those policies?
The way that policy development occurs within government is generally that, say, the transport department would develop that policy, but then there's a. Consultation process with other departments and our department is a very strong advocate through that process. On um making sure that design and development of those policies occurred with. People with disability as we are for First Nations people as well in those policy areas, so. Um, it's through that process that we would strongly advocate with our colleagues in other departments that their policies go through that. Kind of a lens when they're being developed. Um, we quite often assist them by connecting them up with organisations. Like our peak and advocacy bodies. Um, a lot of the those departments do have their own advisory groups as well, so. There is a process within government, but it is done, policy development is usually done by the delivering agency.
Alright, so when um you've told us in response to the way Queensland approaches. The implementation of the CRPD, you also referred to a range of statutes. The Human Rights Act of twenty nineteen, Disability Services Act and the Anti-Discrimination Act of nineteen ninety one. And you said this is part of the collective framework established to uh bring together the CRPD. The ADS, um and the plan and the service plans developed at the departmental level. So I just want to ask you about some of the legislation. The Human Rights Act of twenty nineteen is a relatively new piece of legislation in Queensland. When the act was in- enacted, it didn't have a specific. Uh, reference to or inclusion of the rights of people with disability. And you've said in answer to question B in your response. That Queensland may consider increasing the uh inclusion of rights around disability in the future, is that right? Uh, it's a case, isn't it, that you're actually required to have um. A specific review of the Human Rights Act as soon as practicable after the first of July next year. And that must include consideration whether additional human rights should be included, including the CRPD, is that right?
That's correct.
That's section ninety five subsection four of the Human Rights Act. So it's always been on the radar, has it not, uh for Queensland with respect to its Human Rights Act? To give consideration to increasing or expanding the scope of rights. By reference to a number of international conventions, including the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the Anti-Discrimination Act, you've identified that act as part of the framework. And in May twenty twenty one, the Attorney General asked the Queensland Human Rights Commission to undertake a review of the Anti-Discrimination Act. Noting that it was almost thirty years old. That review's been undertaken and you're you're aware, aren't you, that a report was provided to the Attorney General in July this year?
Yes.
And there were forty six recommendations. And one specific recommendation in relation to the introduction of a positive standalone duty. To make reasonable accommodations for a person with disability in all areas of activity covered by the act. So are you aware of that recommendation?
I'm aware of it, yes.
Do you know if government has responded to the, any of the recommendations in the July twenty twenty report?
I don't believe so, but it's not my department's portfolio responsibility that would sit with the Attorney General's department.
Even though it's not in your responsibility, in responding to the notice that the Royal Commission asked you to. Provide information, you made specific reference to the Anti-Discrimination Act. And accepting that there is a a very specific recommendation around the rights of people with disability in that act. That would be part of the matters that your department would review in terms of ongoing compliance with. Uh, the CRPD, Human Rights Act and a a general approach in terms of law reform. Would that be right?
That would be correct. We would work with the Department of Justice and Attorney General on that.
Has any work been done then to revisit? Uh, any of the recommendations or consider any amendments to the Queensland Anti-Discrimination Act?
Um, I'm aware that there've been discussions, but I'm not aware of any substantial work at this point in time.
Right. Would uh any work on that kind be the type of matter that would be reported? From Queensland into the ADS reporting processes?
Um, if, i- it would depend on the government's response to that report, um but if there was um. A decision on a piece of work like that, then yes, it would.
And we couldn't see in the plan, uh or your response provided to the Royal Commission. Uh, any identification of any other laws in Queensland that may impact on the rights of people with disability? For example, laws that may impair autonomy and issues arising in relation to guardianship and financial administration. Is that the sort of thing that would be part of a disability plan in Queensland to review laws? That touched on the rights identified in the CRPD?
Uh, yes, that could be the case for the departments where that their le- that legislation falls under their portfolio, yes.
But you're not aware that that's been earmarked as a priority area in the disability plan, namely. To review or to audit Queensland laws. To see the extent to which those laws may touch on or adversely impair the rights of people with disability.
So as part of the implementation of the Human Rights Act, um all departments, so there are, you know, specific um. Protections under the Human Rights Act that are applied to people with disability as well, um and every department. Has um gone through a fairly comprehensive process of reviewing its legislation, policies and procedures. In implementing the Human Rights Act. Um, that's such a big process, I think that's still ongoing and there's amendments to legislation being made on a gradual basis. But that has already occurred. Um, it's not specifically highlighted in the current Disability Service Plan, but. Um, it could be if departments identify something that has specific impacts or. Needs to be undertaken in implementing the convention, then they could identify that in their disability service plan.
So the last question is, we asked you about barriers uh in terms of the. Inter-governmental cooperation, so and not that we want to open any constitutional issues here, but the extent to which. Uh, you have states often with the responsibility for the delivery of services in a very. Grassroots and direct way, and then the responsibility of the Commonwealth. The ADS seeks to bring uh all parts of government together in a cooperative and collaborative process. We uh were keen to understand, are there barriers in terms of effective national coordination processes? Having regard to the differing roles and responsibilities across governments at the Commonwealth and state level. And we've asked all of the jurisdictions this with, and I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read the responses, with varying. Degrees of candour about the extent to which there are barriers. So, as I said, I'm not asking you this to sort of open up any dispute with the Commonwealth, but to understand. Where are the barriers in effective intergovernmental cooperation? And the delivery of a a very large enterprise in terms of the ADS. Do you want to speak to the barriers?
Yes, look, um, there are some challenges with any intergovernmental process and I think um. The way that the NDIS is structured is um, it's a great opportunity, but it is also um has been difficult for. Uh, all of the jurisdictions to come to grips with, you know, the the shareholding ministers arrangement, um. The Disability Reform Ministers' um group, I think, is a very positive forum and there is a group of um. Senior um departmental representatives underneath that. Who, and we are working very collaboratively between all states and territories and the Commonwealth. Um, we haven't identified any. You know, significant barriers, I think, at this point in implementing the strategy, noting that it's only been. In place for twelve months. We are working together on, you know, a work plan that articulates the priorities. We have some. Very good working relationships with working groups um supporting us, so look, I I think um. There are challenges, but probably not barriers at this point.
Right. Thank you and um thanks for bearing with us going a little over time this afternoon. Thank you, Chip.
Ms McMillan, did you have any uh application for any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. In that case, uh thank you very much, Ms Boland, as part of coming to the commission, giving evidence and uh. Dealing with Queensland responses to the questions that have been asked by the uh Royal Commission. We appreciate your assistance. Thank you very much. Ms Eastman, does that conclude our proceedings for today?
It does, and I'll deal with the tender of all of the government material across Tender Bundle C tomorrow. Uh, when we've completed the Commonwealth evidence. So that concludes today and we'll resume at ten AM tomorrow.
Very well. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn until ten AM Friday.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.